To participate in the general public comment period, please call now at 818-238-3335. For any scheduled public hearings, please call when prompted to speak if you want the comment to be part of the record. Members of the public may speak for up to three minutes, dependent on the number of speakers.
Good evening. Welcome to a regular meeting of the Burbank City Council, Tuesday, April 11th, 2023. Please join me in a moment of reflection. This moment is intended to begin our meeting with a positive and collective support for our beloved community. City Council welcomes everyone joining us this evening. We encourage you to take a moment to reflect on our community and the work we will be doing tonight. Although each of us has our own unique reasons for being here, we are united in our passion for our wonderful city. And as we pause, let us consider our individual contributions and what they mean to those around us. Let us find solace in knowing that by working together with a shared spirit of community and partnership, we will always act responsibly for the betterment of Burbank. Thank you. Please rise for the pledge. Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mrs. Decermengi, please conduct the roll call.
Councilmember Mullins?
Present.
Councilmember Perez?
Present.
Councilmember Takahashi?
Very happy to be here.
Vice Mayor Schultz?
Present.
Mayor Anthony?
Present. Thank you. We'd like to advise the community, there will be four periods of public comment. Members may, of the public, may comment in person or by telephone during the general public comment period and the public comment period for the public hearing. Callers will be placed in a queue until all in-person comments have been received. Additional in-person-only public comment period will be available after each report to council. The first public comment period on the districting process public hearing is now open. That will precede the general public comment. Please call now, 818-238-3335. Someone is very excited about that. The second period is for general public comment, and that will be after the public hearing. We have two announcements this evening. There's a short video.
The following are announcements for April 11, 2023. The City Council unanimously adopted a resolution in January to transition from an at-large election system to a by-district election system. This process will determine where neighborhoods and communities are grouped together for the purpose of electing members of the City Council. We are hosting public hearings, community forums, and providing two interactive mapping tools to gather people's visions for how district boundaries should be drawn. The second forum will be held on Thursday, April 6th, at 12:00 p.m. via Zoom, and the third forum will be held on Saturday, April 8th, at 10:30 a.m. in Room 104 of the Community Services Building. Please visit www.burbankcouncildistricting.com for meeting details and other resources. The Burbank City Clerk's Office is accepting applications for one scheduled vacancy on the Burbank-Glendale-Pacadena Airport Authority for a four-year term ending May 31st, 2027. The deadline to submit an application is Wednesday, May 3rd, at 5:00 p.m. If interested, apply online at www.burbankca.gov/BCCapplication. Vaccination proof or medical religious exemption will be required of all applicants. For more information, please contact the City Clerk's Office at 818-238-5851, or email
We have two council presentations on the agenda this evening. First is the presentation of a proclamation declaring April 24th Armenian genocide remembrance day in the city of Burbank. I want to welcome Mr. Sarkis-Simonian, Chairman of the Armenian National Committee of America, the Burbank Chapter, to join me at the podium. Mr. Simonian, welcome. Let's get a round of applause for Mr. Simonian. Whereas from 1915 to 1923, one and a half million Armenians were murdered and hundreds of thousands more were forcibly deported from their homes and ancient homeland by the Ottoman Turkish Empire as part of a systematic program of genocide. And whereas April 24th, 2023 marks the 108th anniversary of this tragedy witnessed by officials and missionaries from the United States and Europe, including ambassadors and officials from Imperial Germany and Austria, both allies of the Turkish Empire. And whereas by denying and distorting the facts of this first genocide of the 20th century, the present-day Turkish government deprives the Armenian people of their right to their own history and ancient homeland. And whereas the Armenian genocide has been officially recognized by the U.S. Congress in 2019 with the adoption of House Resolution 296 and Senate Resolution 150, officially reaffirming the U.S. record on the Armenian genocide and President Biden's recognition of the genocide in 2021. And whereas the people of the city of Burbank continue to dedicate themselves to the principle of equal justice for all people and are committed to promoting these values for all generations. Now therefore, I, Constable Anthony, Mayor of the City of Burbank, do hereby proclaim April 24th, 2023 as Armenian genocide remembrance day in recognition of those who suffered as a result of the Armenian genocide. I urge all citizens to join the Armenian community to overcome prejudice and inhumanity through education, appropriate observance, vigilance, and persistence, and call upon the Turkish government to resolve with representatives of the Armenian nation all grievances stemming from the genocide. Signed this day, April 11th. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Anthony, and thank you, City Council, for the proclamation. And this proves the friendship between the Armenian community and the City Council in Burbank, actually. And people might wonder why this is important. It's important for two reasons. For one, for us Armenians, the genocide never ended. Until now, you can see in Artsakh, there's a blockade now against the Armenian people. It's been almost four months. The tactics have changed, but the end, the result is the same, to annihilate the Armenian population as soon as possible. So that's important. And the second important is that, as you can see in other states, people are banning books and changing history. And this time, it might be the Black History. Tomorrow, it's going to be the Jewish Holocaust, and then the next, it's going to be the Armenian genocide, whoever is sitting on that chair of power. So this is important to remind people that we have to be vigilant, we have to recognize all atrocities, because otherwise, they're going to repeat it. So thank you very much, and thank you for the city again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Simonian. Next is a presentation of a proclamation declaring April 18th, 2023 as Holocaust remembrance day in the city of Burbank. I want to welcome Rabbi Mark Sobel of Temple Beth Emet of Burbank to join me. Okay. The proclamation, national days of remembrance. Whereas the Holocaust was a state-sponsored systematic persecution and annihilation of European Jews by Nazi Germany and its collaborators between 1933 and 1945, and whereas over six million Jews were murdered and millions more were persecuted, Roma people with disabilities, Poles, LGBTQ, Jehovah's Witnesses, Soviet prisoners of war, and political opponents also suffered grievous oppression and death under Nazi tyranny. And whereas the history of the Holocaust offers an opportunity to reflect on the moral responsibilities of individuals, societies, and governments, and whereas the city of Burbank should always remember the terrible events of the Holocaust and remain vigilant against hatred, persecution, and tyranny, and whereas the city of Burbank should actively reaffirm the principles of individual freedom in a just society, and whereas pursuant to an act of Congress, the Public Law 96388, the United States Holocaust Memorial Council designates the days of remembrance of the victims of the Holocaust, known as Yom Hashoah, to be recognized by cities across the nation. Now therefore, I, Constable Anthony, Mayor of the City of Burbank, do hereby recognize the days of remembrance on April 18th, 2023, in the city of Burbank in memory of the victims of the Holocaust and in honor of the survivors, as well as the rescuers and liberators. I proclaim that we, as citizens of the city of Burbank, should work to promote human dignity and confront hate wherever it occurs. Signed this day, April 11th. Rabbi, you have some guests you wanted to?
Yes, but if I could just speak a few minutes. Ladies and gentlemen, you may not be aware of it, but the connection between the Armenian genocide and the Holocaust came out of the mouth of Adolf Hitler. He said to his things, "Don't worry about killing the Jews. No one remembers the Armenians." And that is fact that is in documentary. So once again, we are brothers, and we're going to talk together in a minute. But I also want to say something very, very specific. Six years it's been since we did that presentation on the revolt of the Warsaw Ghetto for the Burbank Human Relations Council, and I'm very proud of you. And I'm proud of my colleagues in blue, because whenever there's been a problem, we've called, and there's a black and white, well, sometimes there's a black and white, and sometimes there's a motorcycle officer in our parking lot, making sure that we're safe. And so I don't know if I'm supposed to add some personal, but I want to say thank you to the department, to the city, because you set the tone. And thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, gentlemen. All, thank you all. And now I have some, I'd like to bring Sarkis up, and the members of the Burbank Human Relations Council, and Sarkis and I are going to speak.
You don't have to tell rabbis twice they have to speak. Mike, why don't you come here?
This is a joint statement from the Burbank Human Relations Council. In light of the entire Armenia flyers that have been recently appeared in the cities of Glendale and Beverly Hills, and the anti-Semitic flyers that have been appeared in Burbank, it is the responsibility of us all to take a stand by overpowering hate, one act of common decency at a time.
As two ancient peoples with rich histories, the Armenian and Jewish communities share a common bond of resilience and strength in the face of extreme diversity. Our people have both experienced tremendous hardships and tragedies throughout our respective histories. We've also demonstrated incredible resilience and determination in overcoming them. We stay, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
It's okay. It's a joint statement. We stand together as allies and friends, committed to building a brighter future for all people. We understand the importance of recognizing and honoring each other's struggles.
Let us continue to work together to promote understanding, justice, tolerance, and peace between all communities.
And everyone?
May our shared values of perseverance and hope guide us in our efforts toward a better future for all.
And let us all say amen. Just real quick, for those of you who don't know, almost two weeks ago now, some flyers were posted in our neighboring city of Glendale that sought to divide the Jewish and Armenian communities and pit them against each other. And so it is so very important to see our allies standing together here with that joint statement. Thank you so much. Can we get a photo real quick?
Yeah, both. Come on. Mike, you too. Come on, Mayor.
And just as a reminder, for the Armenian genocide remembrance, City Hall will be lit in the Armenian flag for that duration. So if you're driving by, that's why we'll have those colors up. City Manager, Justin Hess, do you have anything to report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do not have anything for tonight.
All right, great. Now is the time and place for the second public hearing for public input regarding the composition of districts for the city's transition to district-based city council elections. Before we begin, are there any disclosures from council relating to this hearing? Mrs. Decermengi, have the notices as required by law been given?
Yes, they have, Mayor Anthony.
Do we have the complete file of exhibits, correspondence, emails, and other documents?
Yes, you do.
And has the city received any written communications on this matter, and have they been provided to all city council members?
Yes, they have.
All right, thank you. Mr. City Attorney, will you please summarize the matter for us and introduce the city's consultant?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, and for the participating and viewing public. This item is the second public hearing mandated by the California Elections Code for consideration of transitioning to by-district elections from at-large elections. This process started with a demand under the Elections Code by a potential plaintiff who alleged that Latino voters' votes were being diluted by the at-large, the current at-large system, voting system. So we have with us this evening Mr. Doug Johnson from National Demographics Corporation. He is our expert in the area of voting demographics analysis and creation of districts. As I announced last time, he has experience in hundreds of communities throughout this state in the matter of districting. And what I wanted to also bring the public's attention to, the staff report for this matter was posted last week. Today, we posted some additional materials, which really kind of come out of some of the public comments that we've heard in our workshops. So we have a brief little supplemental staff report that explains what the three additional attachments are. The first one is a description of the city's outreach efforts to date to get the public out to comment and participate in the mapping. The second two attachments are information prepared by the potential plaintiff and submitted to the city. It's their allegations of racially polarized voting. It's not the city's documents. Because this matter originated from a threat of litigation, and that threat of litigation is ongoing, we're not able to share the city attorney's analysis of vote polarization. But we can share what was alleged against the city. So those additional attachments, which are on the city's website as Attachments 3 and 4, were, are a document prepared by the potential plaintiff evaluating certain past elections data and identifying which elections they believe present racially polarized voting. The second of those two attachments is the draft complaint that they submitted to the city in our early discussions of this topic. So they are draft, or rather, the complaint is drafted, it has not yet been filed. But that's some context for the public, because I know we received some comments wondering where these originated for. And the supplemental memo does identify the potential plaintiff and that these documents were submitted by him. With that, I would like to turn it over to Doug Johnson, who has a presentation for the council and the public.
Thank you, and it's a pleasure to be with you again. I will jump right in. Most of this presentation is the same presentation as was shown at the first council hearing. By statute, we have to provide this information twice, but we have added in a slide that has the information about what we've heard in the three hearings held so far. So I'll jump right in. As a reminder, we're looking at this as a three-phase process. So right now, we're in Phase 1, which is to move into the safe harbor, which is a move to by-district elections using a five-district plan with a rotating mayor amongst the councils that works today. One question that came up repeatedly is, is this a done deal? I will add, no, this is the steps of the process, and then that Phase 1 will end with the council's vote on whether or not to actually make that change. The goal is to wrap that up, and I'll get to the schedule in just a moment, and to move on to a second phase, where once the city is in the safe harbor, free of the threat of litigation, then we'll look at a variety of different options that the council may want to put on the charter, as charter revisions for the March vote. So Phase 2 would end with that vote in March, on whatever is eventually put on the ballot. And Phase 3 is, of course, the new election system, whatever that ends up being, that'll be used for next November's elections. To look at this process in more detail, we're in the second column here, at the end of the Spring 2023 section, you can see April 11th, public hearing number two. So that's tonight's event. We have had three community forums already, plus the hearing to kick this all off. This phase is all information gathering, spreading the word, getting the word out, and educating the community on what's going on, and getting initial community input on neighborhoods and communities of interest in the city. From here, we go to the next step, which is the maps. And this is when it really tends to get a lot more interesting, and a lot more people tend to get engaged. The first step is looking for the public, looking for residents to submit maps. So at the forums, we did extensive demos of the various options out there for residents to use to draw maps. And I'm happy to say, even though the deadline is still weeks away, we have already received five maps, which is great for this point in the process. And since 90% of maps tend to come in on the last day before the deadline, sometimes, some of us never outgrow high school, including myself. But so having five maps in hand already is great progress, and really shows that the community is starting to engage in this process, and we hope that will continue to grow all the way through June 2nd. The maps that are received by June 2nd will be posted four days later, and then there'll be a hearing on those maps, a council hearing, on June 14th. And that's the first time really where the residents can come up here and share their thoughts about those maps, council can weigh in about those maps. Probably we'll narrow down the scope of maps, not make anything near a final decision, but if we have 50 maps, we may ask you to narrow it down to five or six. Then that, those maps will go out for a whole another round of community input. So we're going to another round of community forums, kind of in-depth informal discussions where people can really get into the nuts and bolts of maps. Residents can continue to draw map submissions as well through that second round, and July 7th will be the final deadline for residents to submit maps. That all comes back here. July 18th and 25th are the scheduled dates where the council and the residents will weigh in, narrow, and choose a map to wrap up Phase 1. That would then wrap up Phase 1. Phase 2 would then be held August, September, October, where we'll have a much less structured, because it's not dictated by state statute, process of discussions, community forums, and talking about what other options may be the one to put on the ballot for March. Obviously, that, the reason for ending in October is, number one, the deadline to put a measure on the March ballot is in December, and obviously, we don't want to be making that large a decision in the middle of the holidays. So that's the goal there. Get in on, get that decision made, have plenty of time to talk about it leading up to March, and then, of course, March is plenty of time before the election in November. So that's our aggressive but extensive timeline for this whole process. In terms of drawing district lines, there are three categories of criteria. The first requirements are the federal laws on the left, equal population, comply with the Federal Voting Rights Act, and no racial gerrymandering. So race can be a consideration. We have to look at it to ensure we're complying with the Federal Voting Rights Act, but it cannot be what the courts call the predominant consideration. So those are the federal requirements. Then for cities and counties, the state has a second set from what's called the Fair Maps Act. It's worth noting, for those that are following the school process, the Fair Maps Act does not apply to school districts. So that's one of the significant ways the two processes are different. For the city, we have, in priority order, that the districts have to be geographically contiguous, they have to minimize the divisions of neighborhoods and communities of interest. We have to follow easily identifiable boundaries like rivers, railroads, freeways, major roads. And the fourth in their priority list, or prioritized list, is be compact, which the state defines as don't bypass one group of people to get to another group of people unless it's to achieve a higher-ranked goal. There's also a prohibition in state law, which is the lines cannot be drawn in a, to favor or discriminate against a political party. So we're not using any political data in this process in an effort to ensure compliance with that. So those are the requirements and statutory requirements. There's also a third category of other traditional reissueing principles that are not requirements. They are things that the courts have said are acceptable considerations. And in a districting project, that boils down to two things. One is respecting the voters' choices, so you can attempt to avoid pairing council members, which we look at as really leaving reelection decisions up to the voters. If two council members end up in the same district, and the voters want to reelect both of them, they can't. So that's where that comes from. Again, it's not a requirement, it's simply something the courts have said is an acceptable consideration, once you meet all the other criteria. The other one in this category is future population growth. If you know an area's going to grow faster over the next eight years, because we'll be revisiting these lines in eight years, then you can under-populate that area a little bit so that it grows into balance as time goes on. But it really is just a very small underpopulation that's allowed within the equal population requirement. So those are our rules and goals. We have lots of data. I will spare everyone going through all these data. But the key number is the top left, the 2020 census total population, because when we talk equal population, it is equal numbers of human beings counted by the census. It's not registered voters, it's not adults or anything like that. It's people counted by the census with a slight adjustment by the state of California. So that's where we get the five-district target of 21,510. So each district should be as close to that as we can. You can vary by a couple of percent if you're trying to achieve one of those other criteria. Then there's lots of other data, and for each map that comes in, we'll be preparing demographic profiles that show district by district, the number of renters versus homeowner occupied houses, multifamily residences versus single-family residents, all the other data that's available here. So if anyone wants to look at a map and see, is there a district where renters are majority, or more than one? Are there districts where multifamily residents are a majority? Anyone who's interested in looking at something like that can look at all the maps and compare In terms of the Voting Rights Act, what the law refers to is protected classes, which is really Latinos, African-Americans, Asian-Americans, and Native Americans. And what it says is if there's a geographic concentration of any one of those protected classes, that concentration of that neighborhood cannot be divided in a way that dilutes their voting strength. You can see here, the yellows and reds and greens are areas where Latinos are a majority of C-VAP, which is Citizens of Voting Age. That's our best available measure of eligible voters. And you kind of get three pockets. You get one up by the airport, you get one along the I-5 corridor, and then a third pocket down by the 101. You don't have to draw a district that connects all three of those, because they're somewhat geographically distinct, especially the one down south. But we cannot divide any one of those three. So the airport area should be kept together, the freeway area should be kept together, and the southern area should be kept together, so we don't dilute their voting strength.
Sorry, just real quick, you said the 101, you mean the 134?
Oh, 134, sorry. Spent too much time on the interchange there. Then the Asian-American C-VAP. You can see from this, similar to Latinos, Latinos are obviously everywhere in the city. are obviously everywhere in the city. They're just concentrated in those three particular areas. Asian-Americans are obviously everywhere in the city. There's no geographic concentration that pops up. We only get a city block here or there with some slightly higher numbers, but no concentration that would play into anything for Voting Rights Act purposes. And similar to African-Americans, no concentration that comes up for Voting Rights Act purposes. Obviously, they live everywhere in the city. The other question that often comes up in this context is the Armenian-American population. And where that comes in is, they are not, at least at this point, a group under the Voting Rights Act defined as a protected class, because to get into that category, there has to be a history of being denied the right to vote. And so there's not that history here. As I mentioned up front, and as I'll talk about in a minute, they certainly count as a community of interest that falls under the California criteria of keeping them together. So we do want to keep them together, it's just not a Federal Voting Rights Act issue. And talking about communities of interest, there are, as I mentioned, those socioeconomic demographics. These maps are kind of summaries of some of those. You can see in the top left, households with a child under age 18 at home. Not a lot of concentration, you know, there are children throughout this city. Where that map usually pops up is if a city has a son-city retirement community or something like that, that just has no kids in it. Spanish spoken at home in the top middle, can see roughly corresponds to the Latino map we looked at earlier. In the top right, household income over $75,000 per year. Again, the reds, yellows, and greens are a majority, the blues and purples are less than a majority. So there's some spread. Obviously, it gets more red as you get up in the top of the hills. But this is a very economically kind of mixed community, to its credit. Not a lot of split that we often see in jurisdictions. Where you do have distinct geographic differences is the bottom left and bottom center, the renters and the multifamily housing, no surprise to anyone that lives here, concentrated along downtown and the two freeway corridors. And then the bottom right factor is, as has been discussed a little bit, the census doesn't count Armenians. They qualify as white. And so it can be hard to identify them, but we did get some data on registered voters who are Armenian. And so you can see a little bit of the blues and a little bit of green in the northeast corner, kind of no surprise. As you get closer to Glendale, you get higher percentages as that population expands out of Glendale. In terms of neighborhoods, the statutory goal of the first hearing in this hearing is to get community input, resident input, on what are the neighborhoods and communities of interest that need to be kept together. So neighborhood's pretty straightforward. What neighborhood do you live in? People can usually answer that. And we want to ask, you know, is it around a park? How do they define it? Around a school, between major roads? And we want to get the geographic boundaries. People may not agree on those, but whatever boundaries they want to offer are welcome in that. And then the goal is to keep each of those neighborhoods together. Communities of interest is a little bit more of an odd term. It could be a neighborhood, but it's really an area that shares a socioeconomic characteristic or an issue concern. So it may be an area that has particular issues with traffic. It may be an area that has issues with, you know, industrial facilities nearby or anything like that. Anything that is kind of a factor tying them together. And so we ask residents to share, what is your community of interest? What is the story that describes your area? And that will usually indicate what characteristics tie them together. And then again, we need to know the geographic area. But this one comes with a twist, that sometimes, the law's very clear that neighborhoods need to be kept together, their division needs to be minimized. But some things that traditionally are identified as communities of interest may actually prefer to be kept together, and others may prefer to be divided. So if you're kept together, that maximizes your voting strength. You have the most chance of electing someone to that seat in the council. But that only gives you one seat. And the point we always make is, this is not the Board of Supervisors. Council members will have no special powers over their districts. It still takes three votes to do anything at the council level. So some communities do say, you know, it reduces our chance to have one person elected from our community, but we will have two or even three council members who have to come to our meetings, who have to listen to us about our issue if we divide up the area. So that's the second piece of community of interest question. What is your community of interest, and do you think it'll benefit from being kept in one seat? If so, then it falls under that state criteria to minimize their division. So that's the whole process and rules. The city, at the council's direction, has engaged in a very aggressive outreach effort with the help of Ariano and Associates. They have been very, very busy. You see a little bit here, I won't go through everything in the list, but you can see all of the things they're doing, from contacting community groups, to doing door hangers, to lots of social media, and obviously organizing the three forums that we've held so far. At these forums, we have also been talking about all these tools. So I'm going to go through them briefly. I went through them in a little more detail the first hearing, and obviously, at the forums, we did a lot on each of these. But they range from the very simple to very powerful. And we always emphasize, these are empowerment tools. There's no requirement to use them. One of the maps that came in was just a verbal wish, I'd like you to do this on your maps. That's great. If someone wants to scribble on a paper map, that's great. But if they want to use these tools, we also recommend that, too. There's a very simple draw-your-neighborhood tool, and we already have 10 neighborhoods drawn, which is great, where people go in and they just four-clicks around their neighborhood, and then they type in a little description of what is it that makes that area a neighborhood or community of interest. We have a paper mapping tool for those that aren't comfortable on a computer or just don't have good internet access. They can simply take this piece of paper, it's got all the population counts on it, and they just draw in their map, and either mail it in, drop it off at City Hall, or just take a picture and email in the picture. And then we have a full-blown online mapping tool that has city block by city block demographics and population counts, and they can go through with all the same detail that I can do on my multi-thousand-dollar software. They can draw a map and get as fine-tuned as they want to in those maps. And so it does have a little bit of a learning curve, but it's a three-minute or four-minute video that shows you everything you need to know about how to use that.
Who's Dave?
Oh, it started 20 years ago. A Microsoft guy named Dave something wrote this all himself. It is now a huge nonprofit with a 15-person staff, but it's kept that Dave's Redistricting App name. I'm not even sure if he's involved in it or not. But it's been around for 20 years as a tool used to measure garymandering at the state level. But in 2020, they made some modifications that now allow us to use it for local governments as well.
You said garymandering again. I've always heard it as gerrymandering.
Yes. So it's always been both ways, except that a couple years ago, the family of Elbridge Gary wrote to the Supreme Court and said, you know, Governor Gary, who unfortunately got tagged with a name, was our great-great-great-great-grandfather, whatever it is, and we pronounce it garymandering. And so the U.S. Supreme Court sent him a nice letter saying, thank you very much, we will tell the justices. So there's no right or wrong, but the Gary family says it's garymandering.
I didn't know it was named after a person. Okay.
Yes, yes.
Learn something new every day.
An unfortunate signer of the Declaration of Independence, and he's known for garymandering.
Oh, wow.
It's an unfortunate legacy. But just to summarize input received, we'll be putting this all together, especially as the June 2 deadline for the residents to submit maps comes in. But as I mentioned, we've got 10 neighborhoods drawn already. We've had 67 people come to the hearings. And at this stage, that's great. You know, we always get a lot more interest once there are draft maps, because it's easier to respond to something concrete and say, I like this line, I don't like that. But that's great to see this interest. Summarizing very briefly, generally speaking, there was a lot of questions about what started this process, you know, why are we going through this process? And I'm sure some residents today will share their opinions. I'm not going to categorize pros and cons that were made, just generally saying categories of comment. And then there were a number of comments, kind of really encouraging the city to continue in its extensive efforts at community engagement and ideas for how that could be done and improved. I mentioned five maps as of earlier today when I checked, and 10 neighborhoods already drawn. So that's a great start. Hopefully, the momentum will keep up with those as we get closer to the June 2 date. So that's my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions. I hope there will be a number of public comments. Statutory, the goal is to get input from the community on neighborhoods and communities of interest. But of course, we can discuss any part of this project that your residents would like.
All right, thank you. We'll go to public comment. We'll now open a public comment to hear from any persons who wish to speak on the matter. Each person may address the council for up to three minutes on this public item only, public hearing item only. For members of the public who are here in person, please complete a salmon-colored card. If you would like to call in, please do so now, 818-238-3335. Our first speaker is Mr. Schlossman, followed by Jared Cavajnulio.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for changing the invocation to a moment of reflection. I felt it's much more inclusive, and we all agree we want a better Burbank, no dispute. We have an elected city clerk who's been absent from a number of meetings. And I wonder, where is she in all of this? And really, why isn't she here? Why isn't she participating? Our city clerks are a wealth of knowledge, and it's been that. We've had our elected city clerk here for decades and decades. Mr. Schultz, at a previous meeting on this subject, you referred to this person, you referred to bullying, and you said you won't be bullied in this process. And when I heard the city attorney talk about a Latino fellow who sent a letter with an attorney, and you felt bullied by it, and I think that's a giant slap in the face to this person who asked for this process to be changed, and also to our Latino citizens and our voters here in Burbank who happen to be of maybe Hispanic heritage. I wonder, what's your problem? I mean, democracy, this is democracy. And for you to say that it's bullying is really out of place. And you kind of hinted about, you didn't say you were going to do it, but you hinted about it, that you were open to spending millions of dollars on a fight that you can't win. The taxpayers will lose. And if you were to win, the very next person could send the same letter, and you'd have to do the same thing, and spend millions of dollars all over again. So when you talk about it, I wonder, what's your goal? What are you trying to accomplish by calling somebody a bully for trying to change things the proper way? It's insulting. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Let me try this one more time. Jared Cavajnulio, followed by Laura Elliott. Did I get it right the second time?
Nope.
Oh. Thank you for your honesty.
Good evening, members of council. My name's Jared Cavagnolo. At the March 14 public hearing, in describing how the demographic data on the front page of the packet I've provided you can be used to define communities of interest, the city's districting expert stated, quote, "Each map that you get will have all of this data for each of the districts", end quote. Now, from what I can tell from a substantial amount of time spent with the city's DRA mapping tool, that statement was clearly not intended for residents using the tool to draw district maps. Aside from political affiliation, which we are instructed to ignore, the only demographic information that DRA provides is population by race. This is a problem, because we're also instructed that race cannot be the predominant factor in drawing district maps, despite the entire purpose of the California Voting Rights Act being greater minority representation in local government, making race the predominant factor in the current lawsuit against the city. If this were not the case, why would the city explicitly identify the plaintiff's race in its outreach materials? So when drawing maps, we're essentially not just being asked to promote racial equity without focusing on racial demographics, but also not provided with data showing how race intersects with a variety of factors to define communities of interest more precisely. I created the maps in your packet by cross-referencing DRA, census, and EPA data to show some of these intersections among racial, socioeconomic, and environmental factors that affect several vulnerable populations. Given that communities of interest are often united by the shared impact of city policy, residents need to see how current and historical housing and environmental policies have resulted in all parts of Burbank, where people of color make up at least 70% of the population, being both majority renter and among the city's most heavily pollution-burdened areas. Or that in 71% of those most pollution-burdened areas, people who do not speak English at home are overrepresented. Or that renters, who are proportionally underrepresented on both council and the landlord-tenant commission, constitute the majority of residents in areas where at least 40% of households are low-income, and the median household income is below $50,000. If a simple social work student motivated only by ensuring that his city's policies promote social justice can create these maps in his spare time, then certainly, paid city staff and highly-paid consultants can and should provide a user-friendly tool showing more comprehensive information about all underrepresented communities of interest, so that residents can make informed decisions when drawing district maps without having to reference multiple data sources. Otherwise, this attempt at soliciting public involvement in the districting process becomes little more than a glorified and expensive paint-by-numbers exercise. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Laura Elliott, followed by Gary Brick.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm all very new to this, so you'll have to excuse me if I don't do this very well. But I've been in the medical business for over 40 years, and I've been a wonderful, happy citizen here in Burbank, California. And I came from an area that had some privilege, and I wanted to be in a place more diverse. And the reason why I came to this area is because as a single mom, I had to flee, and it was very hard to find the areas and their services and everything. And I was very fortunate that they got Wheels, the Got Wheels program, the Verdugo Hills Recreation, the YMCA, all that really helped me as a single parent. And I really thank you very much for that. One of the most friendly cities for single parents to acclimate to. In this moment, I have found that wonderful people lived here of all colors, races, creeds, whatever you want to call it, okay? It was beautiful. And when I found out that we were being redistricted, I said, what's that? And it concerns me. And I'm just going to give my little thing. I want to try to give you a different perspective. I look at it as our patient. I look at it as Big Pharma, big government. I look at it as I see a sick patient. Our patient is Burbank, a city, a microcosm of diversity, inclusion, of energy, of individuals that make up the heartbeat of our city. How did we get here? People came here from all walks of life, contributing to the veins, the arteries, streets, residential neighborhoods, the bones of the infrastructure, buildings for employment, businesses, et cetera. Everyone here, everyone brought something to this patient, making it grow and become strong to withstand outside influences, which I would call a disease, from invading its wonderful embodiment of what we know as our lovely town of Burbank. Our patient, Burbank, is sick. I see big government encroaching upon lovely city, trying to inject a poison that would forever change what made Burbank unique from other cities. Burbank represents the fabric of what America should be. To divide a city into many districts, to cut into the very fabric that has kept us as a unique community, the very pulse of community will be torn apart, and soon you will see the hemorrhaging of the spirit and fellowship of what makes us community as a whole. To separate is to segregate, to segregate is to divide, to divide is to create discourse. Discourse leads to falling of our infrastructure. Infrastructure needs the veins, the arteries, and to connect, so there will be cohesive flow throughout the neighborhoods.
Thank you, Ms. Elliott. That's your time.
Thank you. I implore you to think and help and
Thank you.
and rescind this. Thank you.
I have Gary Brick, followed by David Holtzman.
Thank you, Mayor and Vice Mayor, Council. Congratulations to all the new elected officials. It's been eight years since I've been in this chamber and it's nice to see Judy and Justin and Joe McDougal here. I spent a lot of time working with these folks when I was on council for eight years. So I guess what brought me down here today was that, when I'd heard about this. I had no knowledge of it whatsoever, regardless of what you consider outreach. I just happened to hear from a good friend of mine. I attended the forum at the Buena Vista Library, which honestly, I thought was a joke, okay? We weren't allowed to speak, although a couple of us stood up and raised their hands and we spoke regardless, okay? And I'd like to thank Gina O for coming down, kind of keeping things in order and all that stuff. Lovely lady. So I guess my question is, if this so-called person hadn't sent in this letter, would we be standing here today? Very simple question, okay? Now, in Burbank, we have whites at 56.4%, Hispanics at 23.4%, blacks at 2.9%, Asian 11.5%, Native Americans .04%, and other 5.4%. So, you know, we're somewhat diverse, but this is Burbank. It's like Beverly Hills. You're going to have a majority of white people down there, I'm sorry. The cost of living in Burbank prohibits certain people from coming in here. Burbank's 108,000 residents, 173 square miles. And then we look at Los Angeles. There are 4 million people, 502 square miles. So there's no comparison, the two whatsoever, in my opinion. To sit there and say that, for example, the gentleman mentioned about three areas that, where certain people live, well, if there's only two left after that, common sense tells me the hillside's going to be one and where Mr. Schultz lives, down in his area, would be the other one, okay? So it's just that, you know, I just think that this is all getting blown out of proportion. And everything we've heard tonight, it's not about what can you do, it's like, how we're going to go ahead and district it? Have we thrown in the towel? Is there going to be discussions about that? Anyone think about possibly an election to find out how the people feel about this? Now, I know Santa Monica's spent $20 million and I can't expect Burbank to spend that kind of money, but I think we're just throwing the towel in too, much too early. I think when this is all said and done, that I will be supporting districting, one district at large. Thank you.
I have David Holtzman, followed by Jamil El Amin.
Council members, Mr. Mayor, David Holtzman. First, I just wanted to say that comment comparing the community to a patient really strikes a chord with me. I'm a public health person with substantial training in epidemiology and the credo of epidemiology is to treat populations as patients. And here, it would be unnecessary surgery, really, to carve up the community of Burbank. I talked with Dr. Johnson the other day and learned that we wouldn't be allowed even to draw districts where every district gets a piece of the beautiful downtown Burbank, or as I like to say, BDTB, which is the head of our community. So actually, to draw districts, we'd end up having to chop off the head of our community. And to your interest, Mr. Mayor, in gerrymandering, there is a movie called Gerrymandering and I hosted a screening of it with Common Cause once, when I was a leader in the League of Women Voters. We could talk more about that later. Now, Councilmember Takahashi called me, she wanted to meet with me on the subject and she told me she'd like to see something positive come out of what we're doing here. She, I think, thought I was being too negative with all my stop, 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 stop. So I'm not going to talk about stop, 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 stop. I want to talk about proportional ranked choice voting, which would be something positive and the council member is very interested in learning about it and I hope you all too. As a League of Women Voters member, the councilwoman already knows quite a lot about it. And right now, I don't want to get into all the stuff posted today. It was quite a shock that it was posted without telling us it wasn't from the city. But I do want to say that proportional ranked choice voting satisfies the longstanding desire of voting rights advocates to give voice to voting minorities. It gives voice to significant minority voting blocks regardless of how their voters are distributed on the map. It has been implemented in at least one charter city in California to settle a CVRA Act lawsuit. So, when considering election methods, Burbank residents should know about PRCV, as should elected city officials and city staff. Councilmember Takahashi is right to want to learn from the community and city staff about PCRV. Everyone will benefit from that and we should know what it has to offer the city as a whole. And, you know, finally, as a matter of proper analysis, I wanted to point out that every good consultant's report includes analyses of alternatives, whatever is under consideration and also often a no-project alternative. The city of Burbank and the entire voting rights community would benefit from your sincere and thoughtful consideration of achieving proportional representation through PRCV. Thank you, thank you all.
Thank you. Jamal El Amin, followed by Garen Yigparian.
Mayor Anthony, Vice Mayor Schultz and Council, thank you so much for having me. I have to say I'm dismayed because the fact that this room is not overflowing should be just really concern to us all. You know, to me, that says that most of our fellow residents may not even know about this because it, it kind of pains me to think or, you know, really, I don't really believe that most people in this city know about this and wouldn't come out to talk about it. I went to the forum on Saturday and there were only about 12 or 13 people. So I would suggest that the outreach is not working. Whatever outreach is being done, I think more has to be done, whether we go door-to-door, whether, I mean, we talk about that it's on the Burbank Channel, but most people don't watch the Burbank Channel. I mean, I watch Burbank Channel because I'm a political geek, but, you know, most people, my wife, she doesn't watch that, you know? Everything that she knows about this, I've told her. So I think that if we don't get it in front of all of the people, my concern is that they're going to show up on November 5th, 2024 and be like, what district am I, what is this about? And not know what's going on and that should never happen. The gentleman said that we're in phase one. I feel like we're in phase three of this process, like, we've already moved past the should we or should we not do this and we're already measuring out maps and cutting up the districts without even considering, should we do this? Now, I'm part of that, what we call protective class, and I can tell you that even though it says according to federal law, gerrymandering or gerrymandering is not allowed, there are states all over this country where black people are fighting for their right to vote. Their communities are being strategically cut up so that the, whatever, whatever voting population wants that vote can actually gear the vote toward the district. And it's very, very dangerous. I think if we don't really decide and really focus on, should we do this, I think we're going to be at a loss. And it kind of pains me and it seems like there's a problem in this law because it's very anti-democratic. The fact that some one person can threaten an entire city is anti-democratic. How can it not go to the people and say, is this the right way to go? Are we indeed in violation of the Voting Rights Act? We don't even know that. This is one person that's coming forward this. And then also, he's coming forward saying that it is to embolden his vote and embolden his vote of the community, but you're actually taking away my voice to decide whether this is the way to go forward. So as I said, I think that's extremely anti-democratic and we should really take a deeper look at this. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Garen, followed by Gavin Quinton.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, thank you for the time. First, thank you for the proclamation about the Armenian genocide, which is particularly apt in these days where part two may be coming, given the incompetence of the current government of the Republic of Armenia and the animosity of the two Turkic neighbors that we have. Moving on to the topic of the public hearing, I'm going to say a couple of words on behalf of the ANC and then a couple of personal opinions. So on behalf of the ANC, we're working on preparing some districts that we think will best represent the Armenian community. I know there's some ideas out there also about perhaps the numbers of any new councils that might be created, but we haven't taken any positions on that. Moving on to my personal opinions. One, I think the numbers should be increased drastically. I looked up the population of Burbank when it was founded. Of course, there wasn't a census around then, so the first number I found was for 1920, 2,913. And this year, as I think Gary said, or the last census, we're at 108,000-ish. So that's 38 times the population. We're a little underrepresented overall. So personally, I think 11 would be the magic number and the notion of having one with a person as the nominal mayor with necessarily additional powers, who could be the all-city person, would be a great idea. This way, you get a little bit of both aspects. As far as the actual districting, that would follow the numbers, so that decision probably needs to be made first. I've also known David for a while. I agree that the much better solution would be some kind of ranked choice. I don't care what kind, just tell everyone to number their preferences 1 through 13 or however many candidates are there, the best vote-getters win. That would be the, that would be one solution, or any other similar ranking system, especially since we've gone to a one-round election, which is, in my opinion, suboptimal, forced in part by the foolish law that was passed whenever that was, that forced all cities to make these decisions. So am I missing any of my points? Nope, that's it. We'll be talking again. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Gavin Quinton, followed by David Spell.
Hi, Council, how's it going? Gavin Quinton, Burbank leader. Obviously, I'm a reporter, so I don't have a public opinion on this matter. Really, just a question I'd like to see clarified that I'm seeing on Facebook and my email inbox and here. You know, obviously, this is in some way being imposed on the council by the CVRA and this claim that's been made. But, you know, we have to do what we have to do, whether or not we're in violation of that. But the question I have is, which, which format districting or at-large does the data show is actually more fair? I see that question happening a lot online and, like I said, in my inbox. Maybe some examples we could get from Doug, just indicating maybe cities that have switched to districting, have we seen the election of more Latinos or other particular groups? I'd like to see information on that and I think that could help maybe clear the air a little bit. Thank you.
Thank you. Here's a man I haven't seen in a while. Mr. David Spell, how are you?
Hi, Mr. Mayor, I'm doing well, thank you. Mr. Mayor and council members, thank you for letting me speak. I'm a 24-year resident of Burbank. I just heard about this. Your outreach program, your vendors outreach program is horrific. They sent out 2,000 mailers. I looked through the data today. I read the, the, the actual text of the court, you know, filing and it was copy and pasted into Attachment 3. I'm not sure why that is, but that gave me some pause. I'd like to see the council fight this, reverse your stance on this. It sounds like a done deal, but if we're in phase one, it's not a done deal. We spent millions of dollars propping up the golf course for years and years and years until they hit it in the general fund. And, you know, if you don't, you can spend money on that, that's just a loser and it's been a loser for years and years. And you're telling me you can't fight on the behalf of the citizens of this, of this city for a couple, you know, at least a year and then throw in the towel then? You need to fight this? And if, if we do come to a settlement, I'd love to see ranked choice voting, council members. So we're very interested in this and I'm encouraging you all to read Dr. David Gordon's letters that he sent as part of the public record that aren't available online yet. I still have a minute and a half left. It's great to talk to you all. I haven't been here in a long time. Great to see you on the dais as well. So I was informed that the, the meetings, the hearings were not recorded and people were only given about a minute to speak, which is kind of ridiculous and something that is so crucial to our democracy. So I'm going to tell you right now, I'm in the busiest time of my year, but I came home, came right here from work without any preparation to speak my mind and I'm encouraging everyone to keep coming to these meetings. And I'm going to be videotaping the hearings from now on myself as a private citizen and hopefully we'll get them online for people as long as I'm not working on the weekend. But thank you all. I'd say fight it. This is undemocratic and I think it's way too soon to just give up on this. Other cities are other cities, other fights are other fights. We're doing a great job. People cited as a protected, part of a protected class are sitting on the dais right now. So that's something new and it's a positive, you know, development. So anyway, great talking to you all and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Spell. That's my last speaker card. Do we have any callers on the line?
Yes, we do.
All right.
The first caller is Michael Feinstein.
Good evening and greetings. My name is Michael Feinstein. I'm a former mayor and city council member in Santa Monica and a longtime electric reform organizer and advocate. I'm following up on an email that I sent to you earlier today at 12:40. As you may know, a CVRA litigation against the city of Santa Monica was filed in 2016. And instead of conceding the plaintiff's argument and rather than automatically changing our electoral system from multi-seat at-large plurality elections, like in use in your city, to single-seat winner-take-all districts, Santa Monica has contested the litigation. After a July 2020 decision in Santa Monica's favor in the Court of Appeals, the case is now scheduled to be heard by the California Supreme Court sometime in 2023, most likely to be heard by the October date that your consultant talked to you about where you're going to be considering alternatives. So my first recommendation to you is to ask your staff to contact the Santa Monica City Attorney's Office and review with our city the arguments that we have made. I forwarded in my email to you a resource page from the city that contains all the relevant legal documents and the arguments that we have made of why we're not in violation. The second thing is, in preparation for your October discussion, you should give direction to your staff now to fully investigate the use of proportional ranked choice voting for your elections. Proportional ranked choice voting can greatly empower your voters by giving them more ability to express their preferences and can achieve fuller representation of diverse groups and views held in your community, especially in a case where a protected group or class is not completely concentrated in one area, which is the case in your city for your local Latino population, as your consultant said, having proportional RCV citywide can help any protected group self-district themselves effectively citywide. So I also attached in my emails to you some of my writings on the topic and how the single-seat winner-take-all districts approach in the CVRA does not affect, excuse me, does not work well for all cities and how PRCV can be a preferable alternative. So I hope you give your staff the direction for those two things, to talk to Santa Monica, to learn more about our experience with the CVRA, and to study PRCV. So when you get to October and the Santa Monica decision is rendered, you'll have full information in your hands. Thank you for your time.
The next caller is David Gordon.
Hi, my name is David Gordon, former council member and mayor. I'm speaking in strong opposition to the proposed district-based voting system. The process is legally required to be fair and unbiased. It is not. This public hearing may likewise be defective. Most people in Burbank are unaware of these proposed historic changes that will strip them of their voting representation, from five council members to one. Yet the city attorney's response to my concerns about the people being uninformed was, quote, "The tight, safe harbor timeframes under the CVRA do not afford time for polling the community on the popularity of transitioning to districts," unquote. I'm sorry, this is not about popularity. It's about selling out the public's elected representation in a rush to judgment and it is wrong. The city attorney advised the council city attorney advised the council that, quote, "To date, no city has successfully defeated a lawsuit under the CVRA," unquote. This does not mean we should throw up our hands and surrender. In fact, the council adopted a resolution on January 24 to consider adopting this change. But that is not what is written on this public hearing staff report for on the city's website promo piece. The city attorney wrote in tonight's staff report, quote, "On January 24, 2023, the council adopted a resolution of intent to initiate a transition to district elections," unquote. This is very misleading and not what the council adopted. The actual January 24 resolution states, quote, "The city council hereby resolves to consider adoption of an ordinance to transition to a district-based election system," unquote. The city's website misleads with the same word gains. Thus, this public hearing and outreach implies the decision is a done deal. That was not the council's stated direction. A change to district-based voting will polarize our city and likely fracture long-established, well-defined neighborhoods. All Burbank voters will be disenfranchised from their current voting rights with less representation and voice. Ironically, the politically influential of protected classes and the voters the CRA was intended to enhance will likewise be reduced. I urge the council to protect the long-term best interest of all Burbank residents and voters and not be intimidated. Do not capitulate to unjustified threat in litigation. Instead, gather what legal resources are needed and fight with courage, determination, and leadership. The city has faced huge legal challenges in the past and has prevailed, and I'm confident it can do it again. Thank you.
The next caller is Joan Hardy.
Good evening. Dear honorable city council members, my name is Joan Hardy. I'm a volunteer for the League of Women Voters of Greater Los Angeles, and we have a unit that provides voter services in the Glendale-Burbank area. We routinely provide candidate forums with the cooperation of the city for local, state, and federal elections. For each election, the State League provides useful voter service tools, such as the Easy Voter Guide and in-depth materials called pros and cons on the ballot measures. Since the League of Women Voters has been around for over 100 years, offering voter services, it not only has a lot of knowledge of the electoral process, but continues to study how to improve the voting process and voter turnout. In fact, one of the educational efforts our Glendale-Burbank League did was proportional ranked choice voting. And this was about five to 10 years ago. We held a member event at the Gordon Biersch and invited the public and elected city officials, and we spoke about proportional ranked choice voting, and even did a mock election. We also had a holiday party where we had a league expert talk about proportional ranked choice voting. I remember several city council members, I think it was Bob Bruto and definitely Jess Telemontes were in attendance, and they acknowledged the benefits of proportional ranked choice voting. So this is a concept that I know the city of Burbank has talked about before, as perhaps being a good choice for how Burbank runs its local election. As a volunteer for the League, we're excited to hear about Burbank talking about how to best improve their electoral process. I know the emphasis has been on creating district maps, which I think the League, you know, feels would be an improvement over the at-large elections you currently have. But we, the League also supports proportional ranked choice voting as a good alternative to what Burbank currently has, which is the at-large election system. Thank you very much.
The next caller is Steve Chesson.
Thank you very much. My name is Steve Chesson. I'm president of Californians for Electoral Reform and a nationally recognized expert on electoral systems. I support Mr. Gutierrez's goal to make sure protected groups get their fair share of representation on the city council and have the opportunity to elect candidates of their choice. But it isn't clear to me that district elections will do that. The city attorney has stated that protected groups are too dispersed to be able to draw a majority-minority district. We will need to wait until maps are posted on June 6 to see if that is the case. If so, it may be that a proportional solution, such as adopted by the city of Albany in Alameda County, will provide a better opportunity for protected groups to get their fair share of representation on the city council. Should that be the case, I hope that at that time, both Mr. Gutierrez and the city council will be open to considering a proportional solution. I note that after adopting proportional ranked choice voting, the city of Albany elected both its first Latino and its first Asian-American to its city council. Thank you very much.
The next caller is Stephen Hill.
Good afternoon, members of the council. My name is Stephen Hill, and I am co-founder of Fair Vote and one of the architects of the ranked choice voting method that is used in over 60 U.S. cities and many states. I was contacted by Burbank residents and asked to offer you some thoughts about the current move to go to district elections as a result of the California Voting Rights Act threat. An alternative method exists that not only would provide better representation to the underrepresented communities targeted by the CVRA, but would also allow Burbank to retain citywide elections, and at the same time offer Burbank a degree of safe harbor from the CVRA. That method is, as you've been hearing, proportional ranked choice voting. The Burbank City Attorney's Staff Report says, and I quote, "It is not statistically possible to create a single-member electoral district in Burbank in which Latino-eligible voters constitute a majority. Both the Latino and the Asian populations of the city are dispersed throughout. So it seems pointless to use districts which will not achieve the goals of the CVRA. But proportional ranked choice voting would actually accomplish the job of allowing traditionally underrepresented communities to have a fair chance to win representation while maintaining the citywide perspective and not having to move to districts. In the election year in which three seats are being elected under proportional RCV rules, it would take 25% of the vote to win one of these three seats, and the Latino population of Burbank is very close to that victory threshold. In addition, switching to proportional RCV would actually delay and provide a safe harbor against a CVR attempt, CVRA attempt to force the council to switch to districts. The reason is because the CVRA action is a data-driven process. The plaintiffs have to come forward with specific data that proves their claims of a longstanding pattern of racially polarized voting under the current system, and to some extent, a lack of political success for minority candidates and voters under the current system. But if Burbank switched to proportional RCV, that act would reset the clock in terms of collecting data. The plaintiffs could not claim there is polarized voting under PRCV when it had not been used yet. The plaintiffs would have to delay their CVRA lawsuit for a number of years. I have followed the lawsuit in Santa Monica closely, and I understand that as council members you feel that you are in a difficult situation. In Santa Monica, the CVRA lawsuit divided the community, including the Latino community, since the Latino community is geographically dispersed and will not be helped by districts, which also seems to be the case in Burbank. So some members of the Latino community in Santa Monica were opposed to that lawsuit. So I encourage you to take some time to explore options that arguably will fulfill the goals of the California Voting Rights Act better than district elections will in Burbank. Thank you for your time.
The next caller is Simon Hamel.
Good evening, council. I'm Simon Hamel, and I'm calling to join the majority of actual resident voter commenters and say that this process seems like the opposite of democracy, and that this entire process should be put to a direct vote of the people, and it's not. How do you know that a majority of Burbank voters want to do this? Why not put the idea of doing this to a vote? Wouldn't a judge agree to that? It seems absolutely clear all voters will have less power than our current system, and for sure, any protected class or any other group, no matter how you define it, that group, if we are forced into these gerrymandered districts, will have access to fewer council members who should be trying to earn their vote. If a person in any group, especially a protected class, is injured or loses voting power along the lines of their racial identity, which will happen here, whatever mechanism that happens by, I would think would be considered a racist action. By that logic, though not intention, how can anyone say that the California Voting Rights Act, in the way it will affect Burbank, is anything other than racist? Didn't we pass an ordinance that said we would try to analyze laws and government actions to be sure that we would try not to act in a racist way going forward? If this passes without a direct vote of the people on the ballot to change the government in this way, how can we keep that ordinance on the books when the most basic process of voting would not be protected? Remember, the expert hired for this project has officially testified that there is no way the protected class the plaintiff belongs to will not be diluted and made weaker by this process. This week, democracy was considered under attack when a sitting legislator in Tennessee was voted out by people other than his constituents. Are we going to sit in our glass house of California and pretend we aren't dismantling democracy in our own way if we change governments without the clear consent of the governed? I urge you to at least put a change to districts to a vote of the people who will be governed by it, and absolutely get our state legislators to consider a change to the CVA or some other state-level remedy to get an injunction so that we can put this to a vote and determine for ourselves our own form of government. Thanks very much for your consideration. Good night.
There are no more callers.
Oh, thank you. Being no further public comment, I will now declare the public comment period closed. Mr. City Attorney, would you like to make any further comments based on those calls?
Both in-person and calls, most of that I think we can handle with council questions. But specifically as to, I'm not sure if it was Mr. Holtzman, I know he made this comment in email earlier, but either Mr. Holtzman or another speaker talked about not knowing the identity or the city posting those two plaintiff documents without identity. The memo posted actually identifies the name of the potential plaintiff and that they are their documents. That is clearly identified on the website. As to Mr. Hamel's allegation that implementing the CRA by going to districts is racist, there's actually case law that says the CVRA actually implements the equal protection clause of the Constitution, finding that even though it uses some race-based factors, that it actually implements that by remedying inequities in voting. So there's that. And then I would invite Mr. Johnson to come up and address the handout provided by Mr. Cavanolo, I believe it was, regarding demographic analysis and factors.
Sure. Thank you very much. And I will say, I share Mr., I'm glad you caught the name.
Cavanolo.
Cavanolo. My apologies for not catching that the first time. I would love for the tool to have all the socioeconomic data in it. Unfortunately, as we discussed earlier, this is a national tool. We don't control what's in it, and they only put the very basic data in it. Actually, we're the only ones who share the socioeconomic data as much as we can with our clients. So I, it's not something we control over. And there's actually another tool, an online map tool, that's like $50,000 from ESRI, and it also does not include the socioeconomic data, unfortunately. I will say, though, that appreciate him sending in the maps. And the more data, the better, if people, that is available, and that'll be posted if people want to look at it. And of course, you know, the maps are in the PowerPoint, kind of capture what Burbank residents already know, you know? And census data is imprecise. It's gathered by fairly large block groups, and so it may show renters actually in a, in a single-family area because that street is just in a block group that is generally renters. So I will say, we encourage residents to use your knowledge of the city. Use the knowledge that he talked about of where the renters are, where the areas impacted by pollution are, all those kinds of things. This is, you know, people know this city pretty well. This is in Los Angeles, where you never get to the other end of town. So definitely want as much data out there as possible. We share as much as we can. I support the goal of putting more data out there. But it doesn't preclude people from taking into consideration all the things that the gentleman mentioned, and more, whatevers of import to the individual resident. They know it, and they, they know the streets in, in this town. Most people know where the renters are, where the single-family homeowners are, and if they want to check it, they just drive over in two minutes and check. So I, I support the theory. Unfortunately, that tool has not been developed. We would love for, at the moment it is developed, we will be bringing it everywhere. But the data is certainly available, and we encourage people to keep these things in mind. Don't, don't feel like if the census doesn't say X, Y, and Z, that it's not true.
All right. Mr. Mayor, going through my notes, Mr. Spell raised the issue of why the hearings weren't recorded, and I just wanted to clarify for the public that there are two types of meetings that are happening. This is the second public hearing. These public hearings are required by the Elections Code, and they control at what point we look at different information in the process. So these first two are overviews of the demographic information and an explanation of the process. These are public hearings where all the comments are on the record and part of the record. And we have another, we have meetings with maps, and then we have meetings for consideration of maps to be adopted by ordinance. Each of these five meetings all have a record here in the dais that's recorded. The other meetings are forums or workshops to talk, the initial three, to talk about the tools. The remaining hearings will be discussions of maps, and so they're more working sessions. We originally weren't expecting to take a lot of testimony on the process in those workshops because, as we envisioned them, they were more instructional, and there were actually computers that no one used because people were more interested in talking about the process, which is understandable. But we were expecting we would maybe get some more hands-on mapping. So the first one, we weren't really prepared for a lot of public comment because, as a person who organizes a lot of public hearings, you know, my expectation was different than the public. The online forums are recorded and being made available, but the others, they're being held at locations out in the community with the intention of trying to shorten the distance or find different areas that people may frequent. But they're hands-on, so they're not designed as part of the public hearing with a record. So that's a legal distinction that's important for me, and I understand it's maybe perceived different from the public. But they're two different meetings. So the, there's eight forums or workshops, and there's five hearings, and so there was a purpose for those being different. And, and that's just by way of general explanation for the public as to the distinction between those venue.
All right. Thank you for that. Real quick, before we deliberate, I'd like to ask council if you have any questions of staff. See if our resident lawyer wants to start us off over here. Mr. Vice Mayor, did you have any questions?
You know I do, Mr. Mayor, but it's going to be hard to parse out the questions and the comments. So I'm happy to wait, or I can delve right in.
Let's, because it is a public hearing, let's, let's just stick to questions first.
Okay.
I actually have a question for the city attorney, and if it's possible, that we can talk a little bit about the ranked choice voting that was mentioned by several speakers. And I know we did receive a memo from the city clerk regarding that issue. If it is something that we can share with the public, why we did not choose to decide, let's go to ranked choice voting?
Yeah. So the clerk's information was just preliminary. In participating in these hearings, they heard the interest, and they've started an inquiry with the county and with some of the other cities in our area that have chosen to do ranked choice voting, but Redondo Beach hasn't yet conducted an election. It'll be a year and a half before they're actually in a position to do that. Their information is preliminary, and they've contacted the county informally. The county indicated informally that they do not have the capacity to, their software doesn't have the capacity to accommodate ranked choice voting. Redondo Beach, who had a charter election, chose to go to ranked choice voting. They're doing so by district. So they're still doing district elections. They'll do ranked choice voting within each district. They've selected a vendor, to our understanding, that's going through the process for approval or certification from the California Secretary of State, but has not yet received that. And then, I'm not an expert in ranked choice And then, I'm not an expert in ranked choice voting, but my understanding is there are four or five different methods to implement ranked choice voting, and Redondo Beach, to my understanding, has not yet selected one of those choices. So it's preliminary, but their decision to go to ranked choice voting means that they need to continue to administer their own elections. They don't consolidate with the county as Burbank has, so there's quite a bit involved. That's just preliminary information from Redondo Beach and Los Angeles County, and we don't yet have anything publicly to release because staff in the city clerk's office has only started to investigate that. As to why we didn't, the city attorney's office, who's kind of been quarterbacking this process, the city attorney's office is quarterbacking the process because it is ongoing threat of litigation. Our safe harbor, our current safe harbor expires on the 24th of April. We do not have an agreement to extend it. So the process of complying with the CVRA, as most other cities have, doesn't afford the amount of time to go into all the details of proportional ranked choice voting or any other form of ranked choice voting, and the requirement that we would have to go back to hosting our own elections or administering our own elections. Those are a lot of decisions that go well beyond our office and don't keep us in the safe harbor. So that's, you know, people have raised a lot of interesting points, and there are commenters. Clearly, the former council member of Santa Monica probably has more experience, does have more experience than myself with that subject, and that's something that we would have to look into. But our primary consideration has been the track record of cities in defending against these cases, the cost of the cases, and the very limited amount of time that the city has to comply with the law before, again, being subject to litigation. That's just a legal threat. You know, this council has to decide how it wishes to proceed, and we've provided a vehicle to keep us within those safe harbors, but that's not the council's only decision. The FAQ posted on the city's districting website does identify that this process is not concluded until a majority of the council both introduces and then adopts an ordinance, so certainly there's no done deal, but council is not even in a position to take that action until we follow the process to even put maps in front of the council. The speaker from the news, Mr. Quinton, Gavin Quinton, had asked, "Which is more fair?" Well, we really don't know that until we see the maps. So right now, the citywide demographics of Latino voters is about 22%, but if districts are focused in to include neighborhoods with a higher concentration, it's logical, and I believe the process is designed, to increase their influence. And the Act doesn't just speak to majority-minority districts, it also speaks to increasing influence. And there's no precise threshold for how much influence, but we won't really know until we look at the maps what those new demographics are for the envisioned districts. So that's just kind of the test. That's why we didn't go to ranked choice voting. It doesn't, I disagree with the speaker. I'm not convinced, I'm not saying there's no possibility, but I'm not convinced that the city gets to reset the clock because we pick a non-district option. The only city in the state that has done so has done so pursuant to a settlement agreement and remains subject to that pre-litigation settlement agreement. If they violate that, the plaintiff's counsel still reserves the right to sue them. They haven't lost their standing to sue the city of Albany, I believe it is. So my obligation as your city attorneys to advise you on that risk and find a path forward, and the council faces the tough decision to decide how the city moves forward.
Let me just add one quick piece to it, is that ranked choice voting can be a part, can certainly be a part of Phase Two. So there was a description of why it's not Phase One, but it can certainly be a part of Phase Two. And actually, for residents who are talking about this, there's a lot of interest. When we get to Phase Two, I'd encourage them to look at the Highland case. Highland actually tried to go to cumulative voting, and the judge actually forced them into districts. Not to say, it didn't say it's impossible, just given the facts of Highland, the judge went to district, so that should be something that people who want to go that way should address as well. Coincidentally, I was the expert for Highland pushing for cumulative voting, so I'm just a technician. But yes, it can certainly be part of Phase Two.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My other question, I'm sorry, Mr. City Attorney, you're the star tonight. I just want to hear from you, based on some of the comments that were made by everyone present and people who called in, that the council choice, council has actually two choices. One is to adopt an ordinance by July, according to the schedule that was given to us. My understanding is our second choice is to also be able to put this on the ballot for the March 2024 election, and that is to allow the voters the right to speak and let us know if this is something they choose to do, they choose to have for the city of Burbank. I understand, and I know you're going to go into perhaps what might be our facing legal litigations or some issues with that, but I would really appreciate if you can let all of us to hear that we do have those two choices.
Certainly, the council has the option of putting the decision of whether to go to districts and what those districts look like as a ballot measure. That doesn't necessarily eliminate the safe harbor. If you're going to go, if you're going to delay that, you may not wish to delay the Phase Two, because right now, as Mr. Johnson indicated, we're trying to stay within the safe harbor, and the options that we've proposed for council that we're currently looking at is an option that is most consistent with the charter as it reads today. If the council goes to five districts, there's only the word "at-large" that's inconsistent with the current charter. If the city wishes, if the council wishes to put that decision, the decision of if and how many, on a future election, the state primary election in March of 2024, then the decision about how many districts may need to be made at the same time, because there won't be another election, there won't be time, to then confront the issue of the number before the November 2024 election. In other words, we have to make the March 2024 election to set whatever the voting method is in place so that it can be used in November of 2024. So the current schedule that Mr. Johnson spoke to, and that is in the agenda item, the plan is to get to the safe harbor with a district plan that's agreeable to the council, and then have a second phase where we can consider many of the questions the council raised on January 24th. What about four districts and separately elected mayor? What about six districts and a separately elected mayor? What about seven districts? The council was very interested in several options, and to the public and Mr. Johnson's point, also, what about ranked choice voting? The question is, how much of that is going to be ready to put on the ballot for a charter amendment in March of 2024? So I can't really answer those questions, but we wouldn't be able to do the other phases after March of 2024 and have that in effect for November 2024. So there's some scheduling issues that I'm not really prepared to address based upon the current schedule that we've provided.
Sorry, last one. But with all that, we can definitely address the district issues in March 2024 primary, then address all the other issues, whether we have seven, eight mayor elected or not. Address probably either, we can have a special election after November 2024, or we can also push that into November 2026, where we can put that on the ballot as well. I mean, there is a possibility. I'm looking, sorry, I'm putting a little bit of my city clerk's hat on, where these things can definitely be on ballots, and it can be addressed in future elections. It doesn't all have to be taking place in March 2024 to have an effective election in November 2024.
I agree that if we dispense with the current deadlines that we've proposed, that staff has proposed, that there are a much greater number of options. And the council could make a decision to simply do five in March of 2024, and there will be some limitations there. For instance, are limitations on what types of special elections you can do, whether they have to be consolidated with state elections, and so we'd have to look at that to see how that directs our scheduling decisions. But yes, if we, if we, if the council decides to not beholden to the schedules that staff has put in front of you, the options do increase. Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah? Counselor Press?
I just have one to make a distinction and piggyback off of what Councilmember Mullins was asking. I just want to make a distinction for the sake of the public, and correct me if I'm wrong. With ranked choice voting, there are several cities in California that do that, but many of those are also districted, correct?
All, my information is all except the city of Albany, which is done pursuant to a settlement agreement with one of the more prolific plaintiff's attorneys on voting rights issues. All of them are by district, and many of them, maybe all of them, and I'm not sure if Mr. Johnson knows this for sure, but I think most of them are all in counties that also do rank, are equipped for ranked choice voting. Albany is for sure, because it's in Alameda County, I believe. So all of them are in counties where the county can administer the election. I believe only Redondo Beach, which actually hasn't finalized how they're going to do it, is in a county that has told us they're not equipped to do ranked choice voting. And again, that's not anything official that's published, that's based upon some preliminary informal telephone conversations, and certainly, we could work with the city clerk to firm that up.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I just think it's a really important distinction for the public to know.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you to everybody who came out to speak. Thank you for your interest in this process and for providing different ideas and thoughts about how to make this the best process possible. So I wanted just to confirm that in order for us to really understand the impact of going to districts, we have to see the maps. We have to understand the maps first, and that's the step we need to take next before we can really understand. I mean, a lot of these questions, I think, have been asked about whether it's actually more fair or whether it is the right thing to do, and unfortunately, we don't know the answer to that until we actually get some maps to look at. So, correct me if I'm wrong, this is why we're doing this first, that's why it feels like maybe we're putting the cart before the horse, is because we have to get the information somehow, and this is how we get the information to know whether or not that this process is actually going to make it more fair and less diluted. Is that correct, Mr. Attorney?
Yes, and I will first say, you know, Burbank is known, at least, you know, as compared to many of the cities I've worked for, for public engagement. And so this whole process is so awkward because it started with anticipated litigation, actual threatened litigation, is proceeding under threat of litigation, where I do not advise the council share our own direct analysis of the facts. And so, you know, we're doing all of this public engagement, and there's certain questions that we can't answer because we may be defending a lawsuit, and so that's difficult for the public. Many of them have asked very direct questions about exactly what evidence the city has reviewed, and my answer is, I can't tell you that, which is why we attached those two documents to the staff report this evening. It shows, you know, I don't agree with all of the allegations, I do not validate their information, but what it shows is they've identified particular ballot contests in which they believe there's racially polarized voting in Burbank, and they've done so in a way where they've met some minimum threshold to be able to bring a lawsuit. So that starts the clock and puts us in the position of having to respond. And so, yes, this process has started and not been transparent in that regard because we don't publicly discuss all of our legal strategy on matters such as this. But we're asking the public for input in, under circumstances where they feel they're not getting all of the information, and unfortunately, from my perspective, some of that is unavoidable.
Right. And if I understand correctly as well, that the information that we are working on is also somewhat, not speculative, but it's like kind of back-of-the-napkin math, because we haven't done the full process of doing the community outreach and the districting and drawing the maps to look at. So that, I think even that would not be information we could really use to make a decision at this point, anyway.
Yeah, so the, to my understanding, the data used to discredit our at-large system goes by voter surname, which is not exacting information. The data we use to draw districts is based upon self-identified census data, so it should be more precise. So yes, the allegation itself is general in nature because the data set is not a super precise data set. But it is our expectation, then, that in drawing the maps, we're actually using 2020 census data, that at least our estimation of where voters reside and the ethnicity of where voters reside is going to be far more accurate than the data used to challenge us based upon statewide ballot contests.
Right. Thank you. So by the time we get to our, let's see, the July 25th public hearing, that's when we will make the final decision of whether to call for the ordinance and call for the process to go, right? Is that the decision-making time?
It's the fourth hearing.
Oh, the fourth hearing. Okay.
The fourth hearing, you, so the third hearing, you're going to see maps.
Okay.
Right? You're going to see aggregate map information, and Mr. Johnson's going to be more specific. But let me say what I'm going to say, and then Mr. Johnson can correct me, because, so the third hearing, you're going to see maps, and then we're going to be talking with the community about those maps. At the fourth hearing, you're going to get a more limited, more accurate set of options, and the council, hopefully a majority, well, hopefully for me, a majority of the council will find one that they believe best represents districts and accomplishes the legal requirements that Mr. Johnson went over on his slide deck, the federal requirements, the state requirements, and the optional requirements. So yes, council will, the options will be refined as the process goes, and at the fourth hearing, you'll be making a decision, and the fifth hearing will be basically a second reading.
Got it.
And you'll still need a majority vote.
Got it.
And just to reinforce what the city attorney was just saying, we want, and kind to speak the unspoken assumption, at the third and fourth hearings, we encourage everyone to weigh in on which map they think is best, because the first piece is to pick the best map. The second step is to decide whether or not to do it. So even people who don't want to go to districts, who prefer citywide ranked choice voting, hopefully, they will weigh in on which map they consider best, because that's not meaning they endorse districts, they're just endorsing if we're doing districts, that's the best map.
Right.
So definitely, especially in that third hearing, if we can separate the two questions, the third hearing's about narrowing the list of maps. It's not about whether or not to go to districts, that'll be addressed at the fourth and fifth hearings.
Got it. Okay. Thank you. Because I can understand the frustration of the community of not having information. It feels kind of loosey-goosey in some ways, and I wanted to ask these questions to show kind of the timeline that we will eventually get more data, more specific data that can be looked at and answer the questions that the community has. I hate to say be patient, but we are moving in that direction, so I just, that's why I wanted to ask those questions. And then about ranked choice voting, too, I just wanted to just talk a little bit about the note we got about LA County not being able to move to, they don't have the capacity. We also received in the public hearing documents, one of the comments was that they spoke to the registrar themselves, and they said that they don't have the capacity right now, but they could add the capacity if one of the cities asked for it. And so I think it would be great to get a formal statement from the LA County as to what it is exactly that we are allowed or not allowed to do when it comes to ranked choice voting, and specifically progressive ranked choice voting, and that's the specific kind that folks have been talking about, and that's the kind that, at least in my understanding of ranked choice voting, would probably be the most appropriate for our city. I think that the reason why that's important is because if we need to know whether we can actually do it, and if the answer is a hard no, then that's a different process, that's a different discussion. If the answer is yes, then that's a discussion, too. So that information's really helpful. Would the other council members agree that that information would be helpful?
Yes, please.
Okay. Okay. Great. And then one last question. Where is it? Oh, during the during the community forums, did you hear? I mean, there was a lot of discussion about the process, I understand, because it's is a little frustrating not to have the information. But I'm wondering if you've heard any information from the community about the pros and cons of like different kinds of districting options and interest in the community to make sure that that, you know, I don't know, just comments about the districting itself? Or has it been almost completely about the process at this point?
I attended two of the forum, and I would say nearly every question was why, not how.
Right. Thank you. So I would love to hear, first of all, I would love to hear from everybody in the community what you think in general. That's always true. But in this particular situation, I would love to hear your thoughts about the the value of districting, what districting means to you from a like fairness and practical perspective as well, just to have an understanding of what your view of what the districting would even look like in our city if we did it. So that would be helpful. I have heard from the community, some folks who do want to go to districts. So I I just want to hear that complete circle of of information. I think all the council members would really benefit from that. So please continue to send in your your thoughts. And this conversation is will be continued. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any more questions of staff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I tried to parse it out. So I do have a couple of questions. So unfortunately, I don't think that the slides are marked with a number. So but if it's possible to pull up the slide that's titled "The Phase One Districting Process", it includes the timeline, spring, summer, and fall of 2023, 2024. And while staff is doing that, Mr. City Attorney, I have a question for you. It would appear that at the June 14th public hearings, that'd be public hearing number three, and again, the July 18th public hearing, that's public hearing number four, we will be reviewing maps that are submitted by members of the community at large. I'm all for that. I think it's a great idea. But my question is, are we only going to be using maps that are submitted by community members? Are is staff going to be presenting some alternatives based on their assessment of the data? Is the council free at that point to also lend our advice to saying, hey, you know, maybe we should move that district line two blocks over? How involved of a process is that going to be?
So I'm going to let Mr. Johnson speak to the process. But nothing prevents anybody from going in and identifying neighborhoods and grouping facilities and infrastructure with neighborhoods right now.
Yeah, I agree with that. Hopefully, we'll have a whole bunch of maps from the public. We, as your consultants, will also add some maps to the mix. Our goal is really to fill in the blanks. You know, we'll have all these maps submitted. If there are comments that have come in or just looking at the criteria, clear options that we see that aren't before you, we want to get them before you. And so we'll be adding maps to that mix. But residents should look at it as us just trying to give you a complete picture of options. Ours are no better than anyone else's. And then and and of course, you know, council members, it's like now you're free to do it. Until the second hearing, council members shouldn't be drawing maps because of the process that the statute set up. But now that this hearing is done, if you wish to submit a map, you may. The other piece of it is a big piece that happens typically at that third hearing is a lot of, hey, I like the west side of this map and the east side of that map, you know. And then if the council agrees with that, directing NDC to put those two maps together. So most of the maps end up being maps that we technically drew, but they're the ideas from the residents that you all are directing us to implement. So there is a whole give and take that the maps that you have for that third hearing are by no means the final maps. The goal is to get public input in your direction at that third hearing. And you'll probably have, you know, if we narrow it down to, say, five maps on at that third hearing, you'll probably be back up to 15 maps for the fourth hearing because you'll go in this direction and residents will submit more maps.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just ask one clarifying question, because it's quite possible that of the universe of maps that come in, they may not meet satisfy all of the criteria. Some of them may be off by population percentage, or there may be variations that can actually maximize the minority voting group participation. So my question, just just follow on to Vice Mayor Schultz's question, is does NDC help with the true-up to make sure we're meeting all of the criteria?
Yes, exactly. When the when the maps come in, actually, they'll be posted at least a week before the the third hearing for everyone to see. But if they're not population balanced, or if they raise a voting rights concern, or if they raise a pure maps act or concern, a statutory requirement they may be violating, it'll have a big stamp on it saying, this has this concern or not population balanced on it. So that helps me. We don't bury them because we still want residents and you all to see, hey, someone had this idea of an approach to a map, even if it didn't work. Because what often happens is someone's this person tried the idea X and didn't come out balanced, but someone else had the same idea, just spent a little more time and got it balanced. So you'll still see them. But yes, there'll be a big stamp and they'll be isolated as not complying with the legal criteria.
Mr. Vice Mayor, can I ask a follow-up to that one? As a consultant, I appreciate that you'll be shoring up those maps and filling in the details. But you said something earlier that said your team would be submitting maps? Your team's not from Burbank, though.
True.
So what maps are you submitting?
We are taking what we've heard. A lot of people comment at the meetings and offer their thoughts, but don't go draw a map.
Ah, so you're drawing maps based on public input, not your people looking at the demographics and drawing their maps?
Right. It's not our opinion, but we will also take the criteria to the state criteria and say, you know, hey, if there's a map that would meet the criteria and possibly meet what so-and-so said at the meeting, we'll draw that. What the line I often use is, we try to give you a wide range of options. And if one of our maps doesn't get you all to say, you guys are nuts, well, then we haven't given you a wide enough range of options. So we're it's not, NDC's the expert, here's map, here's your map. It's.
Okay, thank you. The last thing I want is someone to think that someone not from Burbank is drawing a map in Burbank. So thank you for clarifying that. I was a little worried.
And along the same line, our hope is that we've educated the public and given them the tools so that the map you choose is one of theirs.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, Mr. Johnson, this is probably directed at you. You don't we don't need to pull up the slide, but I'm looking at this sheet. It has a series of questions that are purportedly posed to folks, asking, how would you define your neighborhood? What do you what defines your community? My question is, I want to be really specific because I'm hearing from some residents tonight here in person and those who called in that the first community forum, they didn't have a chance to to give that feedback. So I want to know specifically, how and when are we posing these questions to folks?
So that's the goal of the two hearings. I think the way I look at it is that the forums, the first round forums, this isn't true to the second round, but the first round forums, the goal is to educate the residents, empower them on how to use the tools. It's not to create a record of comments and guidance. That's the goal of the council hearings. We want you to hear from them directly. And so that's the difference there. Residents were free to share their thoughts. I wasn't at the first one. Someone from my team was. At the third one, they did announce the one-minute limit, but no one was held to it. A number of the commenters went four and five minutes, which was great. So so, yes, the goal was not to capture that input at those forums. The goal was to show the residents the tools that they could use to share those thoughts and then for them to come here and tell you directly or write to you directly.
Thank you. I just have two more questions. You kind of touched on it, but our one of our former mayors mentioned that when he went to one of these community meetings, that there was no opportunity to speak. So can you speak to that experience? And should the public expect a similar situation if they decide to go to the next set of community meetings?
I'll I'll respond to that. Everyone did get an opportunity to to speak, including demanding that one of my staff, who wasn't feeling well and wearing a mask to protect the public, was told to take his mask off. It it actually got pretty ugly. That's when my chief assistant kind of helped the meeting land. People made a lot of comments. We heard from some people who were in favor of districts who left. They didn't feel that they could share their thoughts. So that first one, you know, I'll take responsibility for that one. We were trying to not make it a debate that would be better served in front of the council. We tried to make it about the the mapping, and that one didn't go as well as we had hoped. The second two, everyone was given an opportunity to speak. Every single question was answered. The online meeting, we opened it up multiple times, and we asked questions until there were no more. On the one on Saturday, we went over time, and we stayed up in front to answer questions until everyone left. So we will be at I will be at the remaining workshops, and everyone will have an opportunity to speak.
Thank you, sir. That's what I love to hear. Final question, and this actually goes to the second to last slide. You don't need to throw it up there, but I'm just saying it so folks are oriented. So, Mr. Johnson, I think this goes to you, but maybe the city attorney can answer. There was a representation that as of April 11th, five draft draft maps have been received. And then separately, there were ten areas drawn in the Draw Your Neighborhood tool. My question is, are these 15 distinct people? I want to know how many individual contributors that we have. Do we have, for example, one individual who may have an agenda? We don't know. Submitting multiple maps? Or are these 15 different people?
So the the we do know who the the five maps come from.
And I'll be clear, I don't want to know their identity. I'm not asking the question for that. I just want a sense of the numbers.
Right. So I do know the five maps come from five different people. We know who those came from. I mean, I'm assuming all the names provided were real names. We don't check that. The the 10 people that drew the neighbor or the 10 neighborhoods we have, I don't know. That is in the records, but I just haven't looked. But and just to prepare the public, too, for the process we do with the draft maps is they'll all get a name, map 101, 102, 103. Who drew them is public record. We just don't stick it broadly on the map because we don't want it to be Mr. Smith's map versus Mr. Jones's map. We want it to be map 101 versus map 102. But there's no secret. All that is part of the public record.
Thanks for the clarification, and I think that's a great idea. I don't think we should be labeling them based on who submitted that. Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have two questions I forgot to ask. And it's related to this. So I noticed that there's a gap between the 11 today's hearing and the June 2 submission deadline. And several of the commenters did talk about outreach and reaching. I know it's difficult to reach 108,000 people and make sure everybody knows. But I'm just curious if you could speak to how the continued outreach will in that space of time to encourage folks to to go online and make those maps or to send them in or whatever?
So the list of all of the outreach activities performed by the city so far is attached to the agenda item this evening. We believe it was fairly exhausted. One off exhaustive, one obvious thing that's not on the list because we just hadn't gotten to it yet is a BWP bill mailer, which goes to every utility payer. That's scheduled in the coming weeks. Obviously, we have to hit a cycle with BWP to get it into the company that does the mailings. That's one thing that many residents are accustomed to seeing for many of our sustainability programs, et cetera. So that's upcoming. We have, based upon recommendation from one of the speakers on Saturday, increased outreach to the senior centers to assist people that may not be as conversant with the computer. But many people did ask for our the paper maps that Doug handed out at the meetings so that they can hand draw and do the math. So we're going to continue with what we believe to be a very robust newspaper ads, social media ads, the banner on the city's webpage. There are a great number of avenues, and we're welcome to to additional suggestions. But our PIO is leading that effort, and we feel the effort's fairly exhaustive from our perspective. But the BWP mailer is an obvious one that hasn't yet come up in our schedule.
Yeah, great. Thank you. And are the paper forms available, like at the library and at the BWP office and just places that people might go in the community to be able to pick one up?
I don't know that they're at the BWP office, but I do know they're in lots of places. And now that you mention, I'm sure the Ariano folks are probably listening to this right now, and will get it over there. Plus, of course, the library, all the librarians can go right on the city website and print it for anyone that wants it if they run out of copies. But, yes, it's quiet time while we let the for for my team, while we let people draw their maps. But the Ariano and your PIO's office are running a million miles an hour all the way through.
Just can confirm they are at the library.
Yay, great. Yeah. And if the folks in the community, if you have other ideas, please let us know. And then lastly, the Mr. Cavanillo submitted those for those that packet, and that is in the public record, right? So if folks want to take a look at that, there is a lot of information in there if folks want to use that as well. But then public record can be found for this public hearing on the minutes when it's posted, right, on the website?
So the clerk will post the communications tomorrow morning?
Yes, we'll post it tomorrow morning, and every correspondence received before 5:00 PM was posted on the website already.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, great. Two questions, Mr. Johnson. We mentioned that Armenian residents can be considered a community of interest. Can we also use environmental factors, people who live in environmentally impacted areas? Could that be considered a community of interest?
Yes. So anything that's a city issue could could be an issue that ties together a community of interest. So, you know, environmental factors, certainly, where in Santa Barbara, the noise corridor from the Santa Barbara Airport was a huge unifying community of interest issue. So all those kinds of factors can certainly be community of interest.
Whether people have horses on their property.
Yes.
Okay.
Anything that's a city-related issue.
Okay. What about types of housing? Multifamily versus single-family? Could that be used?
Oh, yeah, because that's that's another issue that the city has a lot of purview over in deciding what goes where. So anything that way.
Okay.
And I believe that's one of the layers on the mapping tools.
It's one of the socioeconomic factors.
Oh, okay, great. Okay, great. All right, thank you. Mr. City Attorney, I have one last question for you. The Santa Monica lawsuit, someone mentioned that it's probably going to be heard this year in October. Let me ask you this, and this is a weird out of off-the-wall question. If the if for whatever reason, the judge favors the city, how quick, if we wanted to, could we come back and turn around and have a different look at this lawsuit?
Well, once you've made a decision to go to districts, a decision to undo districts is going to be a difficult decision to to redo, particularly when you've solicited the community to identify their communities of interest. And you found a way, if in fact, we found a way to increase voter influence, then to go back and undo that could be a very difficult proposition. But in terms of timing, we've heard that that case, the Supreme Court has indicated they may hear oral argument this summer, and then a decision could be, you know, ready, you know, maybe by August, maybe as late as October. It's hard to say. Sometimes we're surprised by swift decisions. But those issues are not directly on point for Burbank. In other words, the court could send the case back to the appellate court for further rehearing. It may not be something that immediately solves the legal issue presented in Burbank. So I wouldn't encourage you to wait for something with the expectation that it's going to somehow solve the problem because their issues aren't identical to Burbank's issues. There may be some legal principle that comes out of it that is very helpful to us, and there may not. And and so that's that's really a gamble that I wouldn't encourage you to to factor that into whatever decision you arrive at.
And I would just clarify on that. The speaker was pulling October because that was the date on on our calendar. It wasn't that the speaker was saying anything's expected to happen in October. So it is, as as your city attorney just mentioned, there are rumblings of a summer hearing. But we've been waiting for a hearing for 18 months now.
All right. So then let me follow up with this. If if we were, and this is just generally speaking, for city council to put a measure on the ballot for the March 5 primary, when would that have to be finalized, timing-wise?
That would be December. The December timeframe. Well, we have to file, I think, in December. So we'd have to be firming up language October, November, which is why we have that window. We've got scheduling, we've got holidays, but there's a minimum just about 90 days that you have to adopt your ordinance and resolution with the fully baked language, impartial analysis, everything.
To make it on the county ballot.
Yes, to make it on the ballot.
Okay. All right, thank you. Oh, yes.
I want to elaborate a little.
You used to be a city clerk. What do you got?
I want to elaborate on that a little bit. So that everyone is clear, on this summer of 2023, public hearing number five, if we decide at that time that council chooses to go to the March election, we don't then adopt an ordinance, public hearing number five, then we direct staff that we want to put it on the ballot? I just want to clarify to when exactly do we then give directions to staff that we want to have it on the ballot and we're not going to adopt an ordinance?
Well, if you're not, well, you would, presumably, that would be an alternative motion.
To go on the ballot in lieu of adopting.
But it wouldn't have to be as formal an action, right? That's just your action. We wouldn't have a, it's not likely, we're not going to have an ordinance ready for you on the night we think you're going to adopt districts to put something on the ballot for March. Not likely, because this is the schedule we're on until we get alternative direction from the council. But if that's the council's decision, then we would work toward that, and we would build a schedule to make sure that we had the language, any charter amendments, impartial analysis, all drafted and ready to go so that council is able to cast a complete decision on ordinance and resolution in time to get it placed. That could, that could happen earlier than December, right? We don't have to run all the way up to December to make that decision. Many cases, we've been on a different clock. Like with the airport, we barely finished the sequin in time to then turn around a decision to put it on the ballot, you know, for the November. In this case, if the council doesn't adopt an ordinance, well, regardless of whether it goes to districts, if it goes to districts, we still have phase two to do. And we need to get that work done and put that on the, whatever the council decides on the ballot for March 24. If the council wants to push the instant decision of whether to even go to districts, then we have time to prepare that and bring it back to council as well and firm up that language.
So, when would you want council to make that decision, whether we want to adopt an ordinance or actually go out and have the voters make a decision in March?
I would like the council to make a decision at the fourth hearing whether it's going to introduce an ordinance. And if it introduces an ordinance, I would like the council, I would prefer that the council adopt that ordinance. And that's based upon my legal recommendations to you. As to any alternate recommendation, I would have to wait for, I don't have a preference for the alternative because I'm advising you on legal risk and what I believe your options are. I don't have an alternative schedule for putting something else on the March 2024 ballot tonight.
Thank you, and I'll make further comments when time to do it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That's all questions of staff. Oh, one more question. Yes, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. City Attorney, I actually want to follow up on the line of questioning from Councilmember Mullins. We've been operating under the assumption that there are only two choices. That is to introduce an ordinance to go to districts or some alternative. But would you agree that there is a third option, and that is to take no action?
That's absolutely one of the council's options.
Okay. The other question that I had was about the safe harbor date. There's been a lot of discussion. I believe you said the current date expires April 24?
That's correct. That's 90 days from the January 24 adoption of the resolution with intent to transition to districts. That created a statutory 90-day safe harbor.
And that can only be extended by agreement of the other party, right?
That's correct.
So, my final question then is that it is conceivable that even if this council decides to continue down this path, which certainly we are, and to explore the option of districts, we could very well be sued before the next public hearing?
We could. Such a case, in my opinion, would be moot if we're moving toward a decision. Like, we can't do it any faster than we're doing it. And the city has proceeded in good faith under the Elections Code and is holding hearings and is currently using a mapping tool to solicit the public's input on districts. You can only do that at the pace you're comfortable, and that process has a current deadline. So, I could be wrong, but I wouldn't anticipate that we would be interrupted in the middle of this process while we're trying to bring it to conclusion. At the point where we're no longer bringing it to a conclusion, I could see that risk of litigation increasing for sure.
Thank you. Yeah, just on that, we did have a jurisdiction that was much more contentious where the plaintiffs threatened to sue mid-process because that agreement was reached. And it was pointed out that if they did sue, what the council would have to do is cancel all the outreach, immediately hold the final two hearings, and make that case moot, as the city attorney was just saying. And when, when they realized that they were going to cut off their nose to spite their face, the plaintiff's like, oh, yeah, that's a really bad idea. So, as long as you're moving forward, it's pretty clear that such a lawsuit would be moot. It's when you suspend the process that you get exposed.
Okay. All right. Being no further questions of staff, I now declare the public comment hearing closed. The council will now deliberate. We can have a discussion. There's no motion necessary at this time. It is a note and file. But any comments, any concerns from council? Yeah, Mr. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I do have a couple of comments, and I'm going to take them in no particular order. I do want to begin by addressing, I'm going to intersperse questions and comments while also trying to touch on at least some of you who commented tonight. I actually wanted to begin by publicly thanking Mr. Schlossman. After the last hearing, we had a bit of a, yeah, there was some confusion about who I was directing that comment to. And I thank Mr. Schlossman for reaching out and for offering an apology. And I think that that takes, it takes a lot of somebody, and I just wanted to thank you publicly, sir. I do want to give just a little bit of context. The term bully is personal to me, as it's probably a personal to a lot of you who were kids at one time, or who have kids, or nieces or nephews, or people that you know. I was bullied pretty horribly as a kid. And I can tell you that bullying leaves, I won't say scars, but certainly bruises. But I'll also tell you that you learn pretty quickly to spot a bully from a mile away. I bring that up because this conversation about moving to districts could have been had in a much, in my opinion, better, more transparent, more publicly engaging way. It wasn't. Doing it this particular way will absolutely, and I want to be clear, none of these comments are directed to Mr. Schlossman. They're directed to the entire public for consideration and to the person or persons that are behind the suit that are probably watching live right now. Doing it in this manner was an intentional choice. I have a very interesting job, most of you know. I've stood in the courtroom combating human traffickers, corrupt public officials, powerful people, people with money. So, to the comments of two of our former mayors, let me just be very clear. I cannot and will not be intimidated. My motivation is solely one thing, and that is to do the right thing for the community. As I walk into this process, I am absolutely, absolutely open to the prospects that districts might be the very best outcome for our community. And I'm open to the fact that they may not. And absolutely nothing will deter me from making what I believe is the right decision for this community. And I'll just say, as with all council action, there's a very good outcome that will be sued regardless of the outcome here. And I think that if you start to make your decision based on the fear of what lawsuit might come or what the outcome of that lawsuit might be, you begin to stop doing your job. Now, as to the rest of the public comment, I just wanted to mention a couple of things. I think we heard a lot tonight that there is some concern about public engagement. It sounds like after the first community meeting, there was a, we put the, took, put the training wheels back on. We figured some things out. I think that it's getting a lot better. My advice, my direction to staff would just be to make sure that we're, I love to hear that we're willing to go over time, that we're willing to let folks share their opinions with all of us. One minute just isn't a lot of time to really talk about such an important issue to our community. So, to the extent that staff can continue to accommodate three minutes, five minutes, I want to gather, to Councilmember Takahashi's point, every bit of public input that we can in this process. And to Mr. Elamene's comment earlier, I share the concern that this room isn't packed. And that tells me that our public outreach and engagement efforts are not operating on full capacity. This room should be packed, and the fact that we had under 100 people at these community meetings combined, correct me if I'm wrong, but the fact that we did tells me that, look, we're not going to get all 108,000 Burbankers out at a hearing, but less than 100 is an indication to me that we're not reaching everybody. So, that's my invitation to staff, to the consultant, we've got to find a way to connect with these people. You know, mailers are great, but we also have to remember that we also have that amazing Burbank 311 app. A lot of people are using smartphones these days. Let's do a push notification. Let's do what we can using the technology that we have to make sure that people know this is happening, and they have a chance to weigh in. Let me see if I had anything else. Oh, yeah, ranked choice voting. I just wanted to elaborate. I share your interest in that, Councilmember Takahashi. I've actually been speaking with Eric Carter about this for some months. I would agree with you that it would be, you know, back in January when I'd asked for the update about it, and then it was sent home from the clerk's office, and they said that the informal position was, that it couldn't be done. And actually, to Councilmember Mullins, I believe you undertook a similar effort last year as our city clerk. I agree, and it's probably a separate conversation, but I think we should absolutely make it clear to LA County that we would be a city that would be interested in at least exploring that possibility. And it can be done. They just need to get the tools in place. And so, the last thing I'll just say is to, you know, to Mr. Brick's comment, are we throwing in the towel? Absolutely not, Mr. Mayor. I think the community should know that we're going to walk into this with an open mind. I don't know what the outcome's going to be, but I'll tell you, I'm going to listen to you. I'm going to look at the data, and no one's going to intimidate me. Thank you.
Any further comments? Councilmember Mullins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Vice Mayor, as well, because I think it's really important for everyone who's present here or watching the council meeting to know that I believe I'm going to speak on behalf of council, and forgive me if I do that. I think none of us sitting up here really wanted to walk down that road or explore that option. And this didn't even start with the current council started, the process started with the, including the former council members as well. I have to say, am I really happy to see it? Am I pleased and I'm excited that we're even having this discussion tonight? Absolutely not. I know there are certain members in the community who prefer to have districts, and they have a different opinion from what's being voiced tonight and what the council has voiced. And I respect that as well. Voting is a choice, and different individuals have different opinions of what, how we should vote and the process that we should, you know, conduct the voting. I think we're not getting into too much information about how I really personally feel about it, so the city attorney does not think I'm, you know, talking too much about it. But I could tell you that I do want to make sure the public knows and informed about what's going on. We do need to do a better job in outreach. I know the library has the information, but it should be at every front counter in the city. That map should be present everywhere in the city where we're putting in the public in the forefront of their eyes to see it and just to be aware of the dates that we have. We, I know the city attorney mentioned that we're utilizing our paper, the leader. We can take ads in the leader, my Burbank.com. Put those schedules in there to make sure that everyone is aware. Talk to all the organizations, the Rotarys, Kiwanis, Burbank Coordinating Council, the A and C, whatever organization that we have out there, we should make sure to email it to them so they can post it on their website and share it with their members. The more that we talk about it, the more that we spread the word about what we're going through in the public hearing is going to be very beneficial for all of us. So, having said that about outreach, I do want to express my concern for having to make that decision coming after the hearing and drawing the maps and having to come to July and saying, yes, as a council member, I want to make that decision on behalf of the 107,000-plus residents and 70-plus thousand voters. I personally would like to see if this is the route that we're going and the decision from the entire council feeling that this is, we're going to walk down that road, that I would personally encourage our council to get to, you know, at least to come up to an agreement that exploring the option that we go to the voters and have them make that decision. This will definitely inform the voters what's going to happen in November of 2024. And this would help, I think, some of the cases that were presented to us tonight about, come November 2024, people are going to say, what am I voting for? What's happening? If we put it on the ballot, at least they've had an opportunity to see it and have their voice, their opinion. We always involve our community in the decisions that we make. And I think I would be not doing my job as a, representing the community if I did not allow them to have a say to what is going to happen in the, in November 2024 election. So, I just put it out there so council can start thinking about it. I know we didn't talk about, the city attorney said we don't have to make that decision tonight. Perhaps this is something we can explore and come back and think about if this is something that we would like to do. But I think, in my opinion, it would help make at least an effort to do a better outreach and also educate our community and have them to say if this is what they want. And then, we'll deal with the consequences after the results of the election. Meaning, if it passes, it passes. If it doesn't, it doesn't. And this might go away, and they don't come back to present us with another letter. And if they do present us with another letter, we have another meeting, and we make a decision. Perhaps pass an ordinance, perhaps not, and at the time that we can actually make a decision to how we will move forward. But again, I'm just throwing it out there. Think about it, and those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Perez?
Yeah, I just want to thank everybody for being here also, and thank you to my colleagues for asking my questions so that I didn't have to. I really appreciate all of you taking those thoughtful questions. I'm sure we are all on the same page in the questions that the community had, that we have. And as some thoughts and feedback for staff, I think, like the community shared, the outreach needs a little bit of work, and maybe we're doing everything we can. Maybe it's time we think outside of the box a little bit. If you haven't tried YouTube ads, YouTube ads are great. And internally, I think we discussed making use of our water and power bill, right? But let's make use of all our departments. I know it's at the library. Let's make sure it's at Parks and Rec. Let's make sure that flyer is going in front of everybody who is utilizing a city service. I think that would be the best way to get it in front of folks. And then finally, I just want to share one last thought and truly thank everybody, again, who came out here and shared their thoughts and those who shared them with us virtually and in many other ways. And thank you to my colleague, Councilmember Takahashi, for illustrating exactly why we are going in this order, which does feel a little bit cart before the horse. I know the threat of current litigation makes it a frustrating process. It is not the way that I believe myself or any of my colleagues wanted this to go. And I want the public to know that I share many of your concerns. And as a member of one of these protected groups, I want to thank the members of these protected groups that have come forward and said how they feel individually about the litigation, how they feel about districts, how they feel districts have gone in other communities, and for sharing your concerns and not letting others, though they may try, to speak for you. So, I want to thank you all for expressing that, and I want to echo the sentiments that several of my colleagues have made. I will not vote for anything that I see as diluting the voice of traditionally marginalized people in our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Takahashi?
Thank you. I agree with a lot of the points that were already made by my colleagues, and I too am not thrilled with this process. Unfortunately, a lot of cities have gone through this. As was mentioned before, I'm a member of the League of Women Voters and have been for many years and have watched this happen in other cities in various ways. And it's, it's just, unfortunately, that's a, that's a process that gets used. But here we are, and as Ted Lasso says, be a goldfish and radical acceptance. And here we are, and let's move forward and to how we can make this the best we can since we're here. Likewise, to my colleagues, what is most important to me, the thing that I'm thinking about the most is what is fair, what is most democratic, and what makes sense for our community and how, and how it is. So, if districting is the way to go, and because that's the most fair, that's what I'll support. If proportionate ranked choice voting is, that's the way to go. If districts and ranked choice voting is, that's the way to go. It's, it depends on what the data comes in front of us, and I'll make my assessment based on the numbers, the data, the information. And right now, there just isn't enough information to have really a strong opinion in any way. I also wanted to share that I originally, in the beginning, voted to move ahead in this process because I knew from my information I had that we had, it was a long process, and part of the process was information gathering. And part of the process was disclosure and finding out. And part of the process was disclosure and finding out what we're actually dealing with. And I see that we clearly, at least I did not clearly explain that position during that public hearing and that we did not relay that well to the community that this, this process is really information gathering to, so that we can make a decision later. And so I hopefully that tonight, that made that clear and that we, I think we all are in kind of the similar place where we're in kind of limbo of where we want to be. And so your input really helps us understand what your perspective is. And we are, I mean, I can't ask for everybody, but it sounds like we are, none of us are like sold on any particular outcome yet. And so we're just waiting to get the information. And so again, thank you for all of your input. Please continue to be engaged. And I'm looking forward to the next hearing because I think that's when really, that's when we're going to get the, you know, get the meat of the information. So I hope that you'll stay engaged until then and come back. And encourage all your neighbors, knock on doors, be the change in the community and help us all work together to figure out the best way for our city. Thank you.
Thank you. I would love to put a flyer out to the school district. They're doing districts too. Let's see if we can pay for a flyer and they can distribute it. Us and them, half sheet kind of thing, goes to every kid, maybe goes to the PTA. Because I know they're doing one too, so they're going to have to do outreach. So let's, I don't know, maybe save some costs, get everybody involved. That'd be great. Districts are weird. It's like, it's the same people, but you have to run based on your neighborhood, even though you're serving the city. It's odd. If I move over two blocks, suddenly I have to run for a whole different, it's just, it's just weird. My concern for our elections is not necessarily the neighborhood, but the amount of money involved in these elections since we've gone to consolidated. Every person you see up here over the last two elections, on average, had to raise about $50,000 to get a seat. That's a lot of money. I would be very interested, moving forward, looking at these district options and seeing the number of people that you would have to cut down on spending and door knocking. So for me, I'm going in this with an open mind. I'm going in this with an understanding that it's not just what is on the maps, it's not just what's presented on paper, but the actuality of campaigns, of elections, what happens on the ground, that is going to be my concern. So I know in 2020, in 2022, I watched all the debates, I watched all the campaigns, I read everybody's websites, everybody's mailers, nobody was talking about districts. This is not something we ran on. Nobody up here said, I'm going to get on city council so I can implement districts. That's not what we were elected for. So this is, it's a very odd situation that we find ourselves in. I think every single one of us is going to have a very careful eye moving forward. So just know that, know that. This is a note and file. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Thank you, Mr. City Attorney and the staff and for putting this all together. And thank you all for coming out. There'll be plenty more opportunities to speak. I appreciate your time. Let's go. Let's just, yeah. All right, now's the time for general public comment. For members of the public who are here in person who wish to speak, please present a yellow public comment card. If you're at home and you want to call in, now is the time, 818-238-3335. Mr. Schlossman, you're up first again, followed by Cynthia Leva.
Well, I came here tonight to talk about all the mismanagement and waste over at the BWP, but I'm going to put a pin in that and get back to that another time. I support districting. I hope there'll be no settlement and no extension. And I'll tell you right now, if I get a chance to talk before a judge, I will. And I hope I can be the next person to, if you settle with these guys, I'm first in line to go for districting again. And if you all want to give me about 10 minutes, I'll tell you my reasoning in detail. Okay. Item K2 on the agenda, the parking deal that you're going to privatize our parking tickets and whatnot. I want due process for people who get tickets and want to appeal. I don't want the adjudicator of that ticket to be an employee of this parking outfit that you're going to give it to. I want it to be public in a courtroom. Look, I was looking today over on my Burbank.com, I saw a little blurb on the side. It says, "Join us for burgers in Burbank with city council members Zizet Mullins and Nick Schultz." And when you dig into this thing, what's going on, it's really troubling and the both of you should be ashamed of yourself, and I'm going to tell you why. It's one thing to go to, to have a meet and greet at a coffee house where I don't have to go and buy a cup of coffee. At this deal, you got to spend $35 to get a ticket, get a hamburger, french fries, and a soft drink, and a seat at the table. And that's very troubling to me because I want a seat at the table right here. I want to, I want you folks to listen to me and every other citizen without paying $35. Something's wrong with that equation. Some of the things you're going to talk about, homeless resources, rent control, public safety, how many homeless people are you going to hear from, the two of you? You're going to hear, are they going to spend $35 for a hamburger? I doubt it. I won't. You don't have to worry about me being there. This blurb goes on to say, "This is not a place to yell," this is a quote, "this is not," in capital letters, "not a place to yell at the city council member for grievances." Well, that's kind of anti-free speech. Y'all want Pat on the back, Pat's on the back? Is that what this is about? You don't want anything contentious? If I don't believe in all these things that you're putting forward, somebody can't come and talk about it? Shame on you. Who's putting this thing on? The diversity voter PAC. And they're raising money. And who are these people? They're not from Burbank, I'll tell you that. According to their disclosures, they're from Glendale, Rosemead, Los Angeles, and Diamond Bar. And they're all registered Republicans. And who do they do business with? America's Christian Credit Union. Have you ever heard of them? I haven't either, but that's who they do their business with. And if you go to their website, they're quoting Isaiah, Mark, Hebrews, and Colossians. And this meeting, the two of you, what did you get into? How did you get into it?
Thank you, Mr. Schlossman. That's your time.
Good evening. I've submitted an application to apply for the vacancy in the senior board. And so I'm here tonight to introduce myself and to ask that you vote for me. I have been on the senior board before. I served between 2014 and 18. And it's an amazing place. I mean, it's very different from what we saw here tonight, but it's also a little microcosm when we're trying to get out into the community and tell all the wonderful things, services, activities that are here for seniors. And it's hard to do, especially with COVID. And now that COVID is over, it's my hope that the ambassador committee that was started when I was on the board the first time will be reinstated and that we can go out and talk to churches and temples and places where our seniors live, including assisted living, talk to their staff, talk to individuals. It was an amazing, amazing process and makes me proud to be able to be a senior citizen here in Burbank. And one of the things, the easiest thing to do is to just even let people know that we have a senior resource guide. This is an old one, but it's online. And when I spoke to, or talked with Kim Fried this morning, it's being revised. It has wonderful information and not just for seniors. Perhaps you have a parent or a grandparent and you don't know how to introduce them to people, how to find interesting activities, how to ride the bus, how to go to a Rock-a-Hula event, which we've had. There's just so many things. And I would, it would be my pleasure to represent the seniors and I'm asking for your vote. And lastly, currently, there's only one woman on the council, I mean, on the board. There is a seven-person board. And I really think balance would be added by adding another woman. There are other women running or being asked for this position. And if you don't choose me, I would ask you to sort of focus on them as well. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Jack Artan, followed by Ron Bax.
Good evening, Mayor Anthony and members of the city council. My name is Jack Artan. I'm a district representative with the Office of State Senator Anthony Portantino. Senator Portantino would like to thank the council and the Burbank community for the support in commemorating the 108th anniversary of the Armenian genocide and declaring April 18th as the Holocaust Remembrance Day. Without your efforts, this occurrence would not be possible. It is more important than ever that as a community, we continue to combat injustice and promote kindness and greater inclusivity. As we speak, Azerbaijan continues to pursue the ethnic cleansing of Armenians from their ancestral lands in Artsakh, the independence of which was recognized by California in 2014. The story of our Armenian and Jewish brothers and sisters is one of strength and survival. The direct survivors of the genocide and the descendants have made tremendous contributions to our great state, and we thank them for their leadership and collaborative partnership. The senator is truly proud to represent a community that collaboratively supports the diverse cultures that make up the city of Glendale, Burbank. My apologies.
That's all right. You've got a lot of cities to deal with.
That we do. That was it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I have Ron Bax, and that's my last speaker card.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilman. This is essentially what I presented or handed out, I'm sorry, last Monday, or last week because I printed the wrong document, which you'll find, if you've had a chance to study it, I've added the last paragraph on the summary and the addendum is complete. But to let you go over it here, is this is an example of six years. The reason I chose six years is because it started with a bathroom fan here, I thought would be an interesting example of cost increases because it's the same fan, from the same manufacturer, from the same vendor, et cetera, et cetera. The only time, only difference is time. And I was shocked, it went up 50.5% over a six-year period. Then I realized that I could get some other services and equipment that I could give a six-year span over because I do have Quicken and I can do that. So I went and I checked CPIU to begin with, this Consumer Price Index for urban, and I drilled down into the primary residence. The increase over that time has been 27.2%. You can see here, my rents have gone up, well, they used to go up 10.5 and 5.3%. Now they're up at 21 and 15.7% because it did increase the rents back in August. But you can see by looking at all these expenses that they're over 20, 30%. So the point is that CPIU has gone up 20%, but the cost of maintaining the property's gone up over 30%, but the income is only around 20% increase over six years. So you were given an example by many people in the first meeting about, just off the cuff, of the expenses have gone up. I'm giving you some hard data here. As far as the last paragraph in the summary, I just looked at my single-family residence, which is mine, not the four I inherited from my parents, and it just celebrated its 40th anniversary as a single-family resident rental. And it's returning about 4.47% at the moment. Okay? That is comparable to banking, which is 3.75 up to 5% for a $1,000 minimum. We're talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars here, which I could get a much better interest rate on that. And this doesn't take into account the cost of property taxes, hazard insurance, long-term maintenance, personal labor, et cetera. I'm running out of time here, but the addendum is because my wife came to me, her father, my father-in-law, is at an assisted living facility in Ventura. And when he gets his fourth in this year increase in rent over 10 months, he'll have gone up 15.5%. Okay? And also, I just had a tenant sign up, it was coming from 520 East Magnolia. She's going because the owner, who I met a couple of times, sold apparently to a corporation. All the tenants are being evicted so that they can re, 142, substantially renovate.
Renovate. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bax.
Oh, and one last comment, side issue. Gerrymandering.
We're out of time and that's not on, you have to be at the public hearing. Thank you. I appreciate it. That's my last comment card. Response from council on any of the public commenters?
We have callers.
Oh, we have callers. That's right. The public hearing threw me off. We are still on the general public comment period, so we have callers on the line. Thank you.
The first caller is Steve Dunwood.
Good evening. My name is Steve Dunwood. I'm a veteran college educator and environmental champion. I would have otherwise enjoyed talking about the Inflation Reduction Act and the great benefits for combating climate change, clean energy, and environmental justice under that. But I'd just like to take a moment and talk about, you know, what we've all seen happen recently, even that's the mass shooting thing, Kentucky and Tennessee. And that's, you know, really leading to discussions around public safety, accountability, and ending gun violence. You know, I myself know this as well. I was mugged at gunpoint in my own neighborhood, which, you know, I was fortunately unharmed, but, you know, it was a great shock to know that it was done by teenagers who should have been in school. And even as a veteran who served in Iraq, I never had, never had a weapon used on me. So it's a great irony that here in America, I can no longer walk the streets without having that, without having that concern. And, you know, as we're looking across the country at these mass shootings taking place, you know, I think we've all reached a point where enough is enough and we have to make our community safe for everyone. And that means getting at the root of what's contributing to the crime and having transformative public safety. And that means instituting, reinstituting the assault weapons ban, having accountability, you know, within our public safety system and ensuring that we make sure that these events never take place again. There's a new generation on the rise that voice strike was attempted to be silenced, I think, in the last week, but thankfully, at least, you know, one of the representatives in Tennessee was reinstated. And, but it just goes to show that this generation, there's a new generation on the rise that will not be silenced when it comes to this issue, particularly gun violence. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dunwood.
Mr. Mayor, there are no more callers.
Oh, well, okay, that's great. Now being no more callers, any response from council, city manager, any of the comments? I want to thank everyone for calling in and showing up. Yeah, Mr., yeah, Mr. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And sorry to steal your line there. Now, thank you, everyone, for coming out or calling in tonight. Mr. Bax, thank you. Appreciate your comments every meeting. And while I can't speak to those, I do take in what you have to say. So thank you for coming, sir. Ms. Leva, thank you for being here. We'll get to your agenda items shortly. Appreciate, I think, the representative from Senator Portantino's office has left, but appreciate that. Mr. Dunwood, thank you for your advocacy and great video on Instagram earlier this week, talking about this and other issues. The last thing, I'll just mention to Mr. Schlossman about the, this event, this diversity voter pack. Coincidentally, earlier today around midday, I actually informed the organizer that I would not be attending. And based on what you're sharing with me tonight, which is kind of coming as a surprise and I'm hearing for the first time, I feel really good about that decision. So thank you, sir.
Councilmember Mullins?
Thank you. I too would like to thank all the callers and everyone who presented tonight. And Mr. Schlossman, I just, I would like to inform you that I do agree with you that everyone should have access to us if we speak at a group event. The price or the information that was set by the group was not discussed with us nor that we are aware that where the money was going. Basically, the group reached out to myself and the vice mayor. I have no idea how they paired us together to ask us to go and speak to the group about the topics that you mentioned. And as we do with most of the groups or any organizations, we're always happy to be present and speak to any group here in Burbank and talk about what's happening in Burbank. So I do appreciate you bringing it up to our attention. And as the vice mayor said, he had a conflict and canceled today, so we discussed it this afternoon. discussed it this afternoon. And we'll have to find out what is going to happen with that, that meeting and how it's going to take place. I have no idea where the money's going, if it's going to the PAC committee, it's going to the organization. But I'm personally always available to people, and I know the rest of the council do. If somebody wants to talk with us, talk about issues, we're happy to do it. So, thank you.
All right. Anybody else? All right. Thank you all for coming and for commenting. Had a lot of public comment today. All right. Moving on, the consent calendar may be enacted with one motion. Mrs. Decrmenji, please read the consent calendar.
Item number one, review the 2022 Military Equipment Annual Report and renew ordinance 22-3,974, approving the military equipment funding, acquisition, and use policy. Item number two, approval of professional services agreement with Laz Parking California LLC for parking enforcement services. Item number three, approval of a third amendment to the professional service agreement with Leo A. Dally for design and construction support for the community services building security project.
Is there a motion?
I just wanted, on item number two, just to ask something really quick of staff. I promise it's not complicated. I see the chief coming up. Thank you. And I'm, I'm looking forward for this to happen. I think it's going to help a lot of residents who have been complaining about the parking situation. The one thing I do want to ask, if you have kind of an outreach plan to how we're going to start informing the community, that we're going to be back in full force? Because I think I have feelings what's going to end up happening if all of a sudden we start issuing tickets. We're going to get those emails and saying, "We got tickets", and they're unhappy with it. So you have a plan to do a community outreach?
Yes. So actually, in partnership with the company that we chose, the great thing is, is leveraging their ability and their resources. So they actually have a great outreach plan as well. So during the implementation process, that's one of the discussion points. I know that we want to have this happen rather quickly. We don't want to delay any bit of this process. So the first, we are actually planning to meet with them, if approved by council, with this PSA. We will meet with them on Thursday to immediately get this started, which is going to, both of us are going to have a bigger discussion about how we want to do outreach to reach the community. Number one, introduce you to this company, and understand this is a partnership, not, we want them to be recognized, great conversations with them, that they want this to be a partnership, and to be recognized amongst the community as working for the city of Burbank. We don't want to have the difference, where somebody visualizes them in uniform and says, "Who are they, and why are they here in Burbank?" It's actually, we want them to grow accustomed quickly and understand who this company is, how they operate, and that they hold the values of the city of Burbank and the community of Burbank. So that's all part of that outreach program that's going to happen quickly. And that's going to be anything from, you know, we have social, you know, I know you all know Sergeant Fekety, who's our PIO with all of our social media sources. And we want to hit several platforms on this. So it could be anything from Mellors, which we've done with BWP before, we've reached out to the schools. So we have a lot of different avenues to do outreach with this.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yeah, I have a quick question about item number one. Just to confirm, there was a community, this is about the Military Equipment Annual Report. There was a community meeting, correct? And if, and if so, that's available online to view, right?
It is. I'm going to introduce Sergeant Fekety, who put it online today, so that you can watch the community meeting in its entirety. So Sergeant Fekety, and, and by the way, say good evening, because I didn't.
Good evening. On behalf of the chief and myself in the department, Sergeant Brent Fekety, Public Information Officer of the Department. The video is on our website. So if you go to our PD website, and you go to Professional Accountability, which is a running scroll across the top, you scroll down to Department Policies, and it's also where the annual report can be found, with a clickable link. Just below that is the link to the city's website, where the video can be found.
And that's the police commission hearing?
That was the community engagement meeting.
Oh.
That was in collaboration with the police commission.
Gotcha.
That video is also on the city's website, under archived meetings, under police commission.
Mr. Mayor?
To the mayor's point, the police, the regular police commission meeting followed the community meeting. They just happened to be on the same night.
Gotcha. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, just to piggyback on item one, since we have staff, I believe the police commission did look at the annual report and the policy and made a recommendation to council, just for the public's benefit. Could you share what that recommendation was?
That they approve all the items within the inventory.
Thank you.
I have a quick question on the parking. There was a comment about the adjudication of these tickets. How do you fight a ticket? How do you fight a ticket right now in the city of Burbank? And then how would you, if we approved this today?
Absolutely. And I wanted to address that for Mr. Schlossman. I know he, that was a point of contention or concern for him. Just so you know, this is a pilot, we're considering this a pilot program with potential extensions to this. We want to do a real assessment. What we didn't want to do is a quick conversion, so that there's some confusion about how things are going to operate. In the California Vehicle Code, it outlines how you can test a parking citation. It's a three-step process. You have an internal hearing, then you have an external hearing with a qualified hearing commissioner. And your third option, if you're unsatisfied with the results, is you can take it to the county courthouse, which they use downtown. It's Stanley Moss Courthouse for all parking matters. We are going to keep that internal. So the adjudication is still going to be done by us. The enforcement side, obviously, we're going to have through the third-party company. We are going to do the internal adjudication of.
So the three-step process to fight the ticket is not going to change?
Not going to change one bit.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Okay. I'll entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to move the consent calendar.
I'll second.
All right. Moved by Mullins, seconded by Perez. Call the vote, please.
Councilmember Mullins?
Yes.
Councilmember Perez?
Yes.
Councilmember Takashi?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schultz?
Yes.
Mayor Anthony?
No on one, yes on two, and yes on three. All right. We have two reports to counsel this evening. After the presentation, we will take in-person public comment only. Please fill out a yellow public comment card. The first report is the appointment to fill one vacancy on the senior citizen board for an unexpired term. Mrs. Decrmenji, please present the report.
Good evening, Mayor Anthony and members of the City Council. Melissa Decrmenji, Records Manager. Tonight, I will be presenting item number four, appointments to fill one vacancy on the senior citizen board for an unexpired term. On February 27, 2023, the city clerk's office advertised and accepted applications for one vacancy on the senior citizen board for an unexpired term ending July 31, 2024, created by the resignation of William Smith, as he is no longer able to serve. To obtain qualified candidates, a notice of unscheduled vacancy was advertised through the following: the city website, city council meeting announcements, all social media platforms overseen by the city clerk's office, press releases sent to the LA Times, Burbank Leader, and myburbank.com, notices posted on the city hall bulletin board, community groups and organizations. The deadline to submit applications to the city clerk's office for the senior citizen board was Wednesday, March 29, 2023, at 5:00 p.m. The city clerk's office received seven applications for the senior citizen board. I will now read the names into the record. Leanne Dietz, Robert Mills, William Ballas, Cynthia Leva, Marcia Straightfield-Medici, Chella Fiorini, and Sonia Nahas. The applications are listed in order received, and all applicants have met the city of Burbank COVID-19 vaccination policy requirement.
All right. I have one public comment card. Mr. Schlossman?
Yeah. Listen, I hope you'll appoint Cynthia. She took the time to come down here, introduce herself, and she has experience. And I've been going, I'm going to give you an example, bear with me. I've been going to the landlord-tenant, I've been going to the last number of BWP meetings, and they're really clueless about the Brown Act. And I asked Cynthia tonight if she has Brown Act training, and she does. At the, at the landlord-tenant commission meeting, I talked about subpoena power, and everybody argued with me that we don't have it. And when I asked the city attorney about it, even he wasn't sure if your boards and commissions have it. All of you have subpoena power. Were you all aware of that? That you can compel people to come here, and you can compel people to produce documents. And all of your boards and commissions can, but staff has never told them that. And they fight, they fight me when I say you have this power. You can compel resolution. You can do, you can do things. Your boards and commissions ask for more power, but they already have it, and they don't know it. And your staff won't allow them to use it. Your staff member at the landlord-tenant commission was dissuading them, says the chief of police, by the way. Did we need seven police officers here for that one item? Think about that one for a minute. Over at the, last week at the BWP meeting, before I even started to speak, now, keep in mind, I'm the only speaker there who goes there. You get three minutes. And I was admonished by one of your commissioners that they're busy that night, that, you know, I shouldn't take up their time. When I started to speak, one of your commissioners, Tannenbaum, got up and walked out. She does not like criticism. And guess what you get when I come to the podium? Little bit of criticism. So it's important that, I think that all of your appointees should go through mandatory training. You should have videos on what to expect. Some of these folks ask to be appointed, and they don't realize that there's actually some work involved to be done. And they don't realize that, and they're shortchanging at the landlord-tenant commission. That's a fact. So I hope you'll give that some thought, and please, appoint this one person. It really comes down to who you know, too, on these appointees. So that's, goes back to why we need districting, because so much of that is who you know, and who gets the special treatment around here.
Thank you, Mr. Schlossman. I try to know everybody, so that's just my thing. All right. We are moving to the appointment. How do you want to do this? Do you want to read all the names first, and then go for a vote?
If council's okay, we can go straight to the vote.
Let's do it. Straight to the vote. All right.
First vote will be for Leanne Dietz, Robert Mills, William Ballas, Cynthia Leva. Cynthia Leva is unanimously appointed.
Who saw that coming? All right. Congratulations, Ms. Leva. Next is an update on the Burbank Civic Center project. Ms. Elizabeth Goldman, Library Services Director, please present the report.
Good evening, Mayor Anthony, members of City Council. I'm Elizabeth Goldman, the Library Services Director. And if I could have the presentation up, please. All right. I'm here tonight to provide you with an update on the Burbank Civic Center project. Since our last project presentation in September 2022, we've continued to develop the plans. And tonight, we're going to provide a review of the overall project and analysis that were presented last fall, to make sure our new council members have complete information. Along with that, we'll update you on several areas of continued research, analysis, and engagement. While I'll be giving the primary presentation, we have representatives from most of the planning team here tonight to respond to questions, including representatives from finance, community development, Burbank Water and Power, as well as our consultant team. All right. The Burbank Civic Center project is a transformative opportunity to meet city council goals and community needs while providing a, while building a thriving downtown neighborhood in a sustainable and fiscally responsible way. It incorporates several public elements: a replacement central library, replacement office space for the administrative services building, new open space, and parking. In addition, the downtown neighborhood and city council goals are supported by a private component encompassing approximately 475 units of affordable and workforce housing, plus a small amount of commercial space and parking for those uses. We're just a few weeks away from the 60th anniversary of the current central library. The city has more than 30 years of documentation about the library's need to be modernized and expanded, in order to support the community's ability to learn and reach their potential. That element serves as the anchor for this project. The Civic Center project also brings together several other lapsed elements from previous plans, including a planned development of the Civic Center block from the early 2000s, of which only one element, the community services building, was previously accomplished. In this slide, which shows just one possible configuration of the elements, you can see the new 65,000-square-foot library, with 20,000 additional square feet for the offices currently in the ASB, that is, the orange building. At this size, and in a modern building, the library will be able to meet the current and future needs of the community, from supporting children and their families in building basic reading skills, to helping students be successful through their educational journey at any age. The building will expand the library's ability to provide support for Burbank's workforce with basic and advanced technology and job training offerings. It will provide space to read, to meet, to study, and to develop ideas and innovations. In the layout in this conceptual plan, you'll also see open space adjacent to the library building, which could be used for library and recreation programs, for events like celebrations, concerts, and movies, for vendors and outdoor eating and reading spaces, and for interactive play spaces for children. Parking will be primarily underground, preserving the street level for human uses, and the housing is set on housing opportunity sites that have been established in the housing element update to the 2035 general plan, which the city council approved last fall. Again, this is just one possible arrangement of the elements, but it confirms that the identified lots have the capacity for these uses, and gives a sense of the neighborhood feel. In August and September last year, you received two presentations regarding this project. The first reviewed the public-private partnership model, and the second gave the results of a project feasibility analysis that resulted in the current proposed elements and financial modeling. The public-private partnership model, commonly known as P3, has provided a mechanism for framing the Civic Center project. As presented last August, the P3 model provides the following benefits. First, it transfers risk away from the city. This includes construction-related risks, risks related to the long-term condition of assets, and financial risks. Second, it optimizes costs by coordinating across the life cycle of the buildings from the earliest project stages. That basically means when you're designing, you take into account that long, those long-term maintenance considerations, whereas often those are two separate pieces of a building project. Third, it creates incentives for the developer to build and maintain the assets on schedule and to establish standards, ensuring the assets will remain in good condition over many decades. And it leverages public investment to initiate significant private development, with revenue from the private development offsetting public infrastructure costs, and it will spur additional private investment in the area. While the exact version of the P3 to be applied to this project has not been determined, the elements of a P3 can generally be organized under the acronym DBFOM. The city engages with a developer, who usually organizes a consortium of partner entities to support the project. The D and B are for design and build, the standard terms you would hear in a construction project. While being designed, as I mentioned, the P3 considers the long-term maintenance of building systems and finishes and things like that, avoiding decisions that might be costly down the road. The F is for financing, which likely would be handled privately by the development partner, but ultimately could still fall in the city's hands if that makes the most financial sense at the time. Having the developer take on the financing and debt leaves less risk for the city. The O and M are for operations and maintenance. There are a whole range of elements that could be contracted with the developer consortium here, leaving maintenance of the building in those hands for a 30-year contract period. Generally, the benefit of doing this, along with those O and M needs being considered from the earliest stages of design, is that the city is guaranteed to receive a building in excellent condition in 30 years. Many municipalities struggle to keep up their buildings on their own. Through this model, the, the city, through its payments, and the development consortium through its work, are contractually held to a high standard of upkeep. Sometimes this Sometimes this O and M piece is also handled through a separate contract, which can bring many of the same benefits. This project also proposes to incorporate housing along with the public assets. The housing is private development, but it's not strictly speaking the part that makes this a P3, although often for this type of civic infrastructure, housing is part of the P3 setup. For example, the Long Beach Civic Center has been redeveloped over the past several years through a P3. That project involves a new city hall, a library, park, port headquarters, housing, and hotels. The housing aspect of the Burbank Civic Center project serves to support the city's commitment to producing 8,772 new units by 2029 as its Regional Housing Needs Assessment, or RENA, allocation. Along with helping the city meet that goal, having housing in the Civic Center area enhances downtown. The new library and open space, along with access to the downtown business district and transit connections, will make this housing attractive. Based on City Council direction and the financial feasibility analysis, the housing that's part of this project is proposed to be a mix of 80% workforce and 20% affordable. In addition to supporting those larger City Council goals, the housing is a crucial component of the project affordability. So in the feasibility analysis that we conducted and reported on last fall, we considered several questions. These included the balance of elements within the space available. So this is looking at things like urban design principles and the practicalities for things like traffic flow and access to buildings. It also relates to the larger neighborhood, of which these buildings are part. How would these new buildings and spaces relate to downtown Burbank as a whole, both the San Fernando corridor, the other city buildings, and the adjacent residential areas? The components of this project, of course, had to come together to balance financial costs and opportunities. This involved analysis of the capital expenditures of the construction of the public assets, while identifying possibilities for creating revenue streams. Those revenue streams are only possible with a private development component, which is the housing, which supports not just the project financial feasibility, but city needs. And then to attract a development partner, the analysis had to consider all of those elements in that context. A developer isn't unfortunately just going to build Burbank a library out of goodwill. So this all led us to consideration of the P3 model, which I described briefly above, and whether it's a good fit. And staff at this, at this time continue to recommend that, that it is. And then finally, the analysis looked at the connections between this project and the downtown Burbank Transit Oriented Development Specific Plan, which is currently underway, and you heard an update about a couple weeks ago on March 28th. And we're going to discuss that a little bit more later. On the financial front, the questions center on ensuring the city can pay for the project while not having an undue impact on other needs for infrastructure funds and city funds in general, and our ability to carry out all of our other goals. Last year in 2022, we presented a figure of 116.6 million for the public components of this project. As you're aware, inflation has been growing steeply, especially in the construction sector. The current estimated project cost in 2023 dollars is 132.8 million, reflecting a 13.7% increase in the California Construction Cost Index between the beginning of 2022 and today. All of the cost modeling that we're doing as part of this does incorporate and account for inflation, which impacts construction costs on the negative side, but also potential revenue that's going to help fund the project. And at this time, staff still consider the project feasible. It's important to understand all of the numbers are going to be shifting as we move closer to the ultimate date that we are making contractual commitments for the cost of the project. In advance of City Council decisions to potentially move forward with the procurement stage of the project, which are anticipated this fall, a complete financial analysis will be revised to ensure that the City Council has accurate information to back up your decisions. As a broad overview of the project financing, the payments would take the form of a single milestone payment at the completion of construction of the public assets, plus annual payments over this 30-year period to the development partner to pay back their construction costs, the operations and maintenance they'll provide, and equity payments. And you can think of that very much like a down payment and then mortgage payments. The annual cost to the city in each year of that 30-year period is expected to be about $7.8 million, which is also a number that will continue to evolve. This will primarily be funded by using a portion of the Municipal Infrastructure Fund, known as Fund 534, not to exceed 25% of its annual revenues. This preserves Fund 534 dollars for the many other city infrastructure needs, while completing several major outstanding projects in a single effort. In addition, staff proposed development of housing on publicly owned land, creating an ongoing revenue stream through ground leases that would last several decades beyond the project repayment period. This creates a new unrestricted revenue stream for the city that will grow as real estate assessments grow. Staff are also actively seeking grants to offset the project costs. In September, the City Council created a new reserve account and moved $10 million into it to serve as matching funds for potential grants. The primary grant on our radar at this time is an infrastructure grant through the California State Library Building Forward Opportunity. In the first round of that funding last year, Burbank was not successful, as the funds were restricted almost exclusively to renovations instead of new construction. As an example of new construction, they did fund, basically, your library had to have burned down or been destroyed in a flood. So it was a very high standard. The new round is currently open with, with a slightly different set of priorities, and it will be more open to a project of our type. And we will be submitting an application for that next month with notification, notification expected in fall 2023. All right, so that was quite a bit, and that was just bringing you up to speed with last fall. So let me move on now to sharing what's been going on since September. First of all, we initiated a public engagement phase with the project. This started off with a question about ideas for the new library that was part of a larger library survey conducted in fall 2022 that received about 1,600 responses. So lots of good input there. In December, we held three public meetings, two were in person and one was online, and there were about 35 members of the public who attended that, all told. At these meetings, the audience heard a brief overview of the project, and then were able to visit stations to ask questions, provide input on the topics of the library, open space, housing, parking, and sustainability. And as well, we just had an open category for anything else that people wanted to bring up. We've also created a project website, burbankciviccenter.com, where a survey continues to be open with questions from the public meetings. That also has links to these council updates and informational studies, and people can sign up for an email list to hear project updates. Along with the public meetings, we have been presenting to representatives of many city boards and commissions and other organizations with stakes in the downtown. The Board of Library Trustees and the Infrastructure Oversight Board, which are the two primary boards that would be involved with this project, received detailed presentations in 2022. Since December, we've spoken with representatives from the Parks Board, Youth Board, Senior Board, Sustainable Burbank Commission, and Transportation Commission. And later this week, I'll be speaking to the Heritage Commission and then the Planning Commission in May. We've also shared the project overview with the Downtown Burbank Property-Based Improvement District, or Pbid, the Boys and Girls Club, and the YMCA, as well as the Burbank Advisory Council on Disabilities, just to make sure we're gathering really broad input. And all of that information is being, is being compiled along with the general public input. Each group has provided some really great insight into considerations to guide staff work as planning moves forward. The public engagement is really going to be an ongoing process that will continue in the following months, and the next round of more formal community meetings will come when we get to the design phase of the project. Behind the scenes, staff from nearly every city department have been involved in several work streams. While the project is not yet being designed, staff have been working with architects on what's called space programming, to identify broad building layouts and space needs, especially with the library and the Administrative Services Building office spaces being in a shared space. So we had to think about things like opportunities for efficiencies in areas like conference and training rooms that all the staff from the three departments can share. But we also have to think about things like staff access versus public access to different parts of the building, which is one thing in a library and a slightly different thing in some others more office-like city departments. Providing ample meeting rooms of various sizes for public use within the library continues to be a priority. And this task also involves consideration of the open space and how it might be used. In the cases of both the library and the open space, the analysis conducted here will support technical specifications in future procurement documents, to make sure it's clear to developers what the city's core requirements are, while allowing developers' flexibility to be creative in responding to those requirements. Another significant area of work has involved project sustainability and resilience goals, which are considered for each element as well as the project as a whole. There are a number of sustainability tracking systems available for construction of new buildings. Burbank has previously sought LEED certification, as with the Community Services Building. Another system that's been identified for potential consideration in this project is the International Living Future Institute Core Green Building Certification. The tracking systems bring some broad industry recognition, but of course, sustainability is important in and of itself. Drawing on established city resources and goals, staff have begun development of a project sustainability strategy. This incorporates requirements and goals from state and local building codes, as well as the current greenhouse gas reduction plan, among other sources. Some areas identified as most relevant for sustainability and resilience considerations within this project in its context in Burbank include the use of onsite renewable energy and maximizing spaces that can support solar panels, trying to have some onsite battery storage, which supports resilience in allowing the library to at least partially operate in a power failure, fulfilling one of our roles, which is to be the city's cooling centers. And we also can serve as an information hub in an emergency. We want to try to reduce operational carbon by using electrical power as well as efficient fixtures, and also use sustainable materials as much as possible. And that includes not just the material itself, but taking into account the emissions produced in its manufacture, transport, maintenance, and disposal. Another consideration, of course, is water, trying to be water smart by reducing potable water use and incorporating reclaimed water where possible, managing storm water onsite, and planting with native and drought tolerant plants. And then there's also some well-being considerations, like having natural light. If you've spent time in the current Central Library, you know there is no natural light, and that is one of our number one complaints, and it's not a great place to learn. Natural light's good both for the public and for the workers, as well as incorporating as many green spaces as possible. Generally, the staff recommendation is to aim higher than the legal baseline of requirements and so that we can make this project an example of what's possible on a sustainability front. We also, of course, though, need to take into consideration the cost-benefit analysis of the sustainability considerations. And then I want to talk about several planning considerations that intersect with the project. First off, historical considerations that come up in two areas. First, we're in City Hall, which is a nationally registered historic building. None of this project is going to touch City Hall, but there is potential for development on the adjacent parking lot and parking structure. So an assessment of the potential impacts that has been done with some historic architects has pointed to areas that would need to be considered in any final design. The Central Library, as I noted, is 60 years old now. While it is not a historically designated building, the analysis showed that it does have features that could make it eligible for historic considerations under local, state, and national law. These features will be considered as the project description is refined and potential project alternatives are identified with a developer. Another area of research and analysis has been how the Surplus Land Act relates to this project. The Surplus Land Act, or SLA, is a state law from 2019 that requires public agencies to carry out a process to offer surplus property for the development of affordable housing before the property can be used for other purposes. In the case of the Civic Center, the land is not currently surplus. It houses the current library, ASB, and surface and structure parking. Depending on how the project proceeds, the private development components may require the city to follow the SLA process. So this will be incorporated as a possibility into project timelines in order to ensure compliance with state law. And then finally, as you heard a few weeks ago, the Downtown Burbank TOD Specific Plan is making progress this year. This plan considers changes to land use designations. It establishes objective development standards to streamline development of housing, and it considers infrastructure impacts of new housing in the specific plan area. The infrastructure analysis is significant to the Civic Center project. Because the Civic Center project involves housing, it will create increased, increased needs for water, power, and sewer capacity. With up to 9,537 units coming into the whole downtown area under the downtown plan, those impacts are not unique to the Civic Center project, so they're best considered as a part of the whole. And the downtown plan will also be looking at impacts to parking and traffic of this new development. The downtown plan contains a Program EIR, or Environmental Impact Report, which analyzes all of this information. Having this complete for the whole area should minimize any additional review that would be required for the Civic Center project itself under the California Environmental Quality Act, commonly known as CEQA. As noted, the downtown plan also changes land use designations. The sites identified as potential sites for housing within the Civic Center project are not currently zoned for housing. The Civic Center project will proceed on a timeline that has been aligned with the downtown specific plan timeline, to ensure the critical milestones and approvals within that plan have been achieved, laying the path for the Civic Center to proceed. So based on input from City Council tonight and continued public engagement, staff will continue to refine the analyses that we've described. In alignment with the downtown specific plan schedule, we anticipate returning to City Council in fall 2023 with a fully updated financial feasibility analysis and a recommendation to initiate the procurement stage of the project. The procurement will be multi-stage and will continue through the next few years, with additional opportunities for public input once a preferred development partner is selected and begins design as part of the contract negotiations. We're still hopefully on track for the public assets to open around 2027. A few months ago, you met to set your City Council goals for this year, and this project in various ways supports each of those goals: city services, economic development, housing and homelessness, quality of life, transportation and traffic, and sustainability and resilience. A modern Central Library and modern office space for the Finance and Management Services Departments will improve the service offerings to all the residents of Burbank. An up-to-date library with natural light and supports for multiple uses, plus the new open space, will improve quality of life. The project will support economic development, not just through bringing people to live in and visit downtown Burbank, but through library, workforce, and entrepreneurship services. The project will add several hundred units of both affordable and workforce housing, helping the city meet its housing commitments. And the project will connect more users with adjacent transit development that's coming down the line, supporting a less car-dependent Burbank. And finally, the sustainability and resilience will be incorporated into every aspect of the project. So tonight, we are not asking for any action from council, but after public comment, members of the project team and I would be very happy to hear your input and take any questions you may have. Thank you.
All right. I have one public comment card. Mr. Schlossman?
You know, some time ago, that caller who called earlier, that former mayor, David Gordon, he talked about adding another floor on the Community Services Building. This is before you were here. And, you know, they laughed at him. He saw this. He had the vision to know that we would need it. But here we are. I'll tell you, this project is epic. And really, the changes that are coming on here in Burbank, I don't think any of us can grasp what's going to be happening in really just a few years, a short time. You're talking about outreach for this districting deal. There should be the equal effort of out, outreach for this. This is really an epic deal here, too. 475 units here and, and, you know, these buildings all on all these different blocks. This is going to be a, a big deal. Somebody told me that it was the parochial school that gave us the land for the library. You know, it abuts the parochial school. Somebody told me, I forget who it was, that there is a deed restriction, that if you abandon the library, that land reverts back to the parochial school. So I would like a definitive answer if that's true or not. That's a big deal. You're making all kinds of plans, and it could be that you don't own the land. They're just letting us use it for a library. Okay. Whatever, whatever developer deals you make, don't give away the farm. The city has a history of doing that, and all you got to do is look across the street from our old police station. When you wanted to accomplish something, you gave it to the Cusamano's. No, it was $100.
$100.
Yeah, it was $100. So don't, don't, don't do that. You know, make a deal that the taxpayers benefit. Don't be so desperate that you give away the store for these things. I don't I don't like it that you're talking about spending taxpayers' money. I want it where we make money off of it, where we get a free library. That's how I'll support it. I want the library, and I want, you know, more money coming our way through the land, through a land lease. I want to always own the land forever. My kids, my grandkids, forever. It's a long time. Above all, above all things, no bond, no parcel tax. Don't even think about increasing the taxes of the residents to do this. Don't reach over to the BWP and grab more money from them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schlossman. Staff, would you be able to answer some of those questions there? Specifically, the question of the deed restricting. Second, you said it's paid for through the $7 million a year would be paid through, I'm sorry, what fund that we have?
Fund 534.
The 534.
On the deed, I don't know if the city attorney has any information. I have never heard that before myself. I have to admit.
It's easy enough to check because it would be recorded on title. So we can have our real estate people check that. That's the first I've heard of it.
Okay. And then the 534 fund, we don't have to go to a bond, like, we're not going to the taxpayers for this.
That's your Measure P money, and we're trying to limit that to less than 25% of that for this.
Okay. So we already went to the taxpayers. Yeah, okay, great. Thank you. Any, well, I'll start with this. It is only a note and file, however, we're doing pretty good on time, and I believe this is the first opportunity the three of you have had. No? Well, here in council, here in council. So if you have any questions, yeah.
No, I was going to say I've heard it probably more than
That's right.
you can imagine, sitting here as the city clerk. But I also want to applaud Elizabeth Miss Goldman for attending all the boards and commission meetings. And I, as a liaison to some of those boards and commissions, I've heard her presentation. She did have good questions from the groups, and this is exactly what we're trying to do, is encourage the members of boards and commissions to ask the right questions and get engaged. You can never do enough community outreach. So I do agree with you, Mr. Schlossman, that we have to do as many meetings or community outreach as we can possibly do. I noticed in December, so we did three in December 2022. I don't know if we're planning to do some more meetings in 2023 or before the last hurrah. We need to go out there and have maybe one last meeting, just for those that missed it in December. So maybe you can help us out, let us know what we've done.
Sure, we certainly can. We'll definitely be doing more public meetings when we get to the design phase, and that's where it's a lot more tangible, and we'll get more attendees. Right now, it's fairly abstract, and there's a lot to absorb and not that many specifics to comment on yet. At this point, we don't have anything else scheduled this year for more public meetings, but that's certainly something that we can add into the mix. And I believe there will be some public meetings coming up on the downtown plan this year, and so one of the things we've talked about is coordinating those aspects as well.
Great. When you were on IOB, they talked about, and you were on library board. Okay, so you guys know.
Mr. Mayor, I was on the library board when this idea was still like just a twinkle in Ms. Goldman's eye. So, and then I moved to the IOB when the project started to get into that phase, and now I'm here. So I feel like I've been kind of moving along with the project since its beginning. Yeah. Super excited. Big, you know, the library, we lived at the library, you know, when the kids were small, and I volunteered there for many, many years, and the kids volunteered there. So I'm super excited about this. But I want to point out one particular slide that I was just like, my heart was beating of happiness. The sustainability and strategy slide. If you could just, like, copy this slide and everything you said about it and just hand it to every single new building that's going to be coming into the city, that'd be much appreciated. You have, it sums up like everything, I think, that where our greenhouse gas reduction plan focuses on and the desire for resiliency and sustainability. So that was really nice to hear that that's part of the project. So thank you. I'm super excited about the whole thing.
And I do want to say that it's been extremely beneficial to this project to have our sustainability officer, Mr. Johnstone from BWP, to really have that expertise on the city side of the team.
I was wondering who that guy was back there. Just hanging out watching. How do you feel about this?
Great. No, thank you, Elizabeth, for putting this forward, and I'm just excited to see two libraries built in my lifetime. So I was there. I was actually, I believe it was my last meeting as a board member, when we talked about some of the feedback from the surveys and all that, and we really went into detail. And I think it was great that we got a lot of public response and got to hear from a lot of the community members, a lot of parents, a lot of students. A lot of people are excited to see the library come up. So I know I'm excited and looking forward to all of the new features that we'll have, which have been much needed by community members and staff.
This is an interesting, it's community building. Like, we do, there's a lot of exciting things happening in the city right now, but this is like a huge epic kind of, and it's not even formed yet. It's just like, we're just thinking about it. Anyway, there's other stuff. Mr. Vice Mayor?
Epic, that's the word of the night. I like it. No questions, Ms. Goldman, great job. Just a couple, just quick points of feedback. I agree with the commenter, when we look at the financial feasibility plan, I definitely want to see how we're going to pay for it without going back to the taxpayers, and I think we have the funds to get it done. In terms of housing, so I was looking at that slide, and I was reading the report, just the perspective of one council member, you know, we hear a lot of complaints, and rightfully so, about the impact of state legislation locally. And so I love where you're going with trying to offer a mix of affordable housing as a component, along with workforce housing. My just two cents would be, by the time this project's coming online, we're probably going to have an idea of where we're still falling short in meeting those targets. It's always easier to add market rate housing or moderate income housing. Those more affordable housing levels are really hard to build or even extract concessions out of the developer. So we may want to look at that, because if we can meet our targets, guess what? Senate Bill 35 doesn't apply in Burbank. So let's just add the housing we need. And then the last thing I would just say is, in terms of an opportunity to generate revenue from the project, you know, and I'm sure this is something you're already thinking about, but in terms of a new library, to me personally, what goes hand in hand is a nice place to get a cup of coffee or a cup of tea on the very rare rainy day in Southern California. But I think that there is going to be baked-in opportunities to get a vendor in here and maybe get a little bit of revenue off it that way, too. That, and then I would also just say encouraging a partnership with BUSD. I love the Smart Lab, you know, but just more opportunities like that, more opportunities to incorporate job training and really expanding the public's understanding of what a library is. Books and eBooks are great, but it also includes a lot of tactical training and, sorry, tactile training is what I mean to say, and like technology. I think that there's an opportunity to think outside the box a little bit, so. But I'm excited about the project.
Yeah. And Mr. City Manager, this is some legacy-building stuff that we're talking about here. So this is going to last. And if you could be, if it could be a Pete's Coffee, that'd be great. I love Pete's Coffee.
Mr. Mayor, to that point, and thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor, for saying that, because, Ms. Goldman, what was the very first thing that we talked about when we were talking about this idea? Rooftop café, right? Yeah, maybe not rooftop, but we're on the same wavelength here, so, been from the very beginning.
I only have one thing to add. Let's make it local. I'd love that. Locally owned. No disrespect to corporations. They do good business, but let's make it local.
That'd be nice. All right, this is a note and file. Thank you for the presentation. Obviously, you'll be coming back to us a lot more, so we'll be following along, and so will the city and the voters. Excellent. Now it's time for council members to report on their council committee assignments.
I can go first. I had none this week.
That was easy. Okay, great.
I had one, Mr. Mayor. And Thursday, April 6, I attended the SCAG Energy and Environment Committee meeting. And at that meeting, we went over the regional water conservation and planning five-year plan, and that was really exciting. They did projections out for, well, actually, more than five years, actually, I think. Projections out on water needs and what we can do for conserving water, and I passed that information along to a city manager and also to the BWP.
Okay, great.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So as you all know, I am a representative to the Arroyo Verdugo Communities Joint Power Authority, and I just wanted to report out that we had, at least my first in-person meeting, April 6. The key takeaway was we had a presentation from Metro Micro about the success and the challenges of that program and its potential future. My point in advocating to Metro was that I would love to get our hands on that data, especially as it applies in Burbank and as we're looking at the future of Burbank bus routes. So I guess my request of staff would be, and David Criskey's on it, but if we can just follow up, I think Metro seems amenable to giving us that data, and before we start laying new fixed routes, let's look at where people actually want to go in our city. Thank you.
Excellent. On Wednesday, I attended the Domestic Violence Task Force. In fact, a member of the public showed up, and we were able to help her with some very specific issues. That usually doesn't happen at that meeting, but I'm glad we were there and able to help. The next morning, I attended SCAG, the Transportation Committee and the general meeting. Lot of votes, lot of moving stuff forward. It was mostly just appointing leadership. Everyone mostly got reelected, so. Yeah, all right. Now we'll hear from council on their comments, including reporting at attendance at conferences, regional meetings, and community events. Who would like to go first?
I can just start us off and save us all time by saying we will be going to the Cal Cities Conference in Sacramento. Bright and early.
We can get out of here pretty quick. Mr. Vice Mayor?
I will not. However, I think I will be representing all of us at the Valley Economic Alliance Gala, so I'll try to do the best I can. Couple recent meetings, one with the mayor, one with Councilmember Perez, with various constituents who had questions or had ideas to bring. The other thing I would just mention is I had a meeting with the Burbank Peace Officers Association today, just about, I'm making the rounds, and I want to get a sense from their point of view of the recruitment and retention issues. So just data collection, and that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. If I can get a babysitter, I'm going to be joining you that night. So we'll see. It's contingent upon me getting somebody. I know a couple of us attended the Coffee with Caroline, our Senator Menjivar had some coffee on Saturday. That was a fun event. A couple of folks showed up there. I attended the Youth Art Expo Gallery showing over at George Isaiah Park. That was interesting, a lot of good stuff from our K-12 folks here in Burbank. Saturday morning, there was an Armenian genocide transgenerational effects and healing event. This was really interesting. It talked about generational trauma and how you break the cycle. And then there was a ribbon cutting later that day. It was the one-year anniversary of the Complexion Apothecary. So that was fun there, right by the Gary Marshall Theater. They've been here for a year. And then Sunday morning, I attended the Easter celebration at the Western Diocese Church, the Armenian church up here on Glen Oaks. For those of you who don't know, in Eastern Orthodox, Easter is a big deal. It's bigger than Christmas. So they had a huge, huge event. Typically, they invite the mayor, and they have a whole thing, and it was very fun. I got to release some doves. That was very weird. That dove was looking at me funny. But it was gorgeous. It made for a whole thing. So that was really great. And then next week, I'll be attending Greek Easter at my church. Okay. Any, oh, yes, please.
I also attended the Coffee with Caroline. That was, actually, there were about 15, 20 people there, so that was nice to see folks come. And then I also was at the Transgenerational Effect and Healing Event for the Armenian Geocide, and I came a little later than you did, so I think you'd already left when I got there. And I was able to watch the keynote speaker. That was really informative, and I think that, you know, one of the concerns we have in our communities is mental health, and this is a very specific concern of mental health is transgenerational trauma that is brought down from generation to generation from an original trauma. But the Armenian community is still experiencing trauma. So it's almost, it's doubled. And to know that this is available for the community every year is great. And then I also wanted to put a plug for the location of this event, which is the Armenian Community Center. You don't have to be Armenian to participate, and they have a lot of programs there that are great for the community. So for folks in the community who are looking for something to get involved in, that's actually a really great, it's over by IKEA. So it's a really great community center to look into as well.
75 East Angelino, I believe. All right, now is the time for the introduction of additional agenda items. Do any members of council have any items to introduce?
Mr. Mayor, just one. Mr. City Manager, I believe the city of Glendale has put forward a resolution about including the counting of Armenian population in the next census. I would like us to take a similar approach, and I can certainly provide a copy of the resolution they've passed in Glendale. Thank you.
Okay. We now adjourn the meeting to Tuesday, April 25 for a regular meeting in the council chamber. Publicly view the meeting online or on television, and be able to provide public comment in person at the reports by calling in directly, leaving an e-comment on the website, or emailing Thank you all, and good night. Have a safe flight tomorrow.